All right, we should be recording. So, welcome to the July 15th joint meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board and the Transportation Advisory Board. It's so nice to be together again. I'm Dave Benzine, I'll be just doing the few little tasks of chairing. Tila and I exchanged an email on that. And since I made the agenda setting meeting, we figured that would work. I'll go ahead and hand it over then to Jean Gatzit to do the virtual participation rules.
Great, thank you, David. So, the city is engaged with the community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This promotes safety for our community members, staff, council, and boards, as well as the democracy for people of all walks of life. More about this vision and the four rules can be found on the city's council webpage under participate in city council meetings. Okay, let me move to the next one. All right, are you seeing my next slide? There we go. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code, and these will be upheld during this meeting. So, all remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Any obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epithets, or other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to post, actually, it's just their, the name that they're currently known by, and we typically require a full name before a public comment. Still not seeing members of the community, but if we get any in the next few minutes before open comment, we will use the raise hand function to do that, and I can go over a little more protocol at that point, should we have folks. I think that's all, that's all I have, David.
Great, thank you so much, Jean. And I just wanted to just, if everybody would indulge me for a moment, we have a very big update next week on CU South. And I've been asked to just remind the public, for I guess there isn't any public, but if anyone listens later, that we have a 48-hour cutoff for any communications electronically that will be considered as part of public record for that hearing. So, please remember to get comments in 48 hours before the meeting, that will be 6:00 PM on Tuesday, if you have anything to submit in writing, or if you have any presentations. And otherwise, the speaking engagements, of course, go up until meeting time. So, I just wanted to make sure to highlight that, so there's no surprises for folks next week for that fairly big item. And so now, before we go into public participation, I'll just turn it over to our planning director, Jacob Lindsay, to welcome us. Thank you, Jacob, for attending.
Thank you, David, and welcome to all of our members of Planning Board as well as Transportation Advisory Board. I just wanted to, first of all, give a word of thanks from all of city staff to each of you who give so much to the city of Boulder, volunteering your time, effort, and insights to the work that we do. Tonight, you'll be hearing from staff an update on the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. And more importantly, we'll be listening to you to hear the feedback that you have, the insights that you have, and the important dialogue that comes from having these two boards convene as one. I think that this is a special meeting for us, and it also marks a milestone in the course of this plan as we are really crossing the 50% mark and reaching a point where this plan is beginning to have recommendations that coalesce into something greater than what it was before. This part of Boulder, of course, is a unique place. It's a place that's in transition, and this sub-community plan comes at just the right time to guide the growth of this place. Efforts like this and meetings like this are a part of what makes Boulder the number one city to live in America, according to some sources. And it's because of your effort that we've achieved that kind of milestone. So, thank you all for being here, and thank you all for the robust showing of city staff that I see as well. And with that, I will turn it over, and we can continue on this meeting. So, thank you all.
Thanks so much, Jacob. And, great, so the next item on the agenda then would be for public participation. Jean, do we have anyone on to participate in the public participation at this point?
Not unless anybody who's here for the next item has a panelist would like to address the board on some other topic, or this topic as open comment. But, oh, here we go, looks like we've got one other attendee. Kurt, we've just, I see that you've just joined us, we've just opened up the open comment and are asking if folks would like to speak. Would you like to, if you would like to address the board, you can use the raise hand function?
And the public speakers will have three minutes to address the board, and you can address us on any subject, including East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. So, we'll look to see if Kurt is going to raise his hand.
Kurt, since you just joined us, you are the only member of the community, and that's why we were naming you specifically, so.
All right, well, it looks like then we're probably good to go to move forward. We don't see hand raised. Thank you, Jean, for that. Okay, so we have one discussion item tonight, and that is East Boulder Sub-Community Plan Joint Board Work Session to provide feedback on the Community Review Draft of the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. And so, we'll be hearing from a number of staff members and consultants tonight. And so, it's going to be quite an extensive presentation, I think. So, I think tonight what we'll do is go ahead and hear the presentations, because then we'll hear all of the related concepts put before us, and then do open it up for questions after the presentations, because there might be things in the slides that answer some previous things. So, just keep your, hold your questions tonight, and then we're going to try to keep it to about 20 to 30 minutes for questions, and then we'll go into four key, for questions for the presenters, that is. And then we'll go into four key questions, issues that have been, we've been asked to comment on. And those four issues were put in our packet, and we'll go through them one at a time. And then what we're going to do is Jean will kind of run us through calling on each individual board member to speak for, you know, a minute or two on each of those key issues. Since we have so many people involved, we thought that would be a good way to go forward. And Jean, you can fill me in if I missed anything on that, since I know you kind of came up with that proposed way to do things. Does that make sense?
That, that's great. Well, once we get to the discussion times, we'll show you our fun way of starting off.
Yeah, we're going to start with a random person and then go by alphabetical order by names, so that way people can just kind of not worry about whether they go first until they get called on. So, with that, then, I'll go ahead and turn it over. Charles, did you want to kick us off on behalf of the Planning Department, and we'll look forward to the presentations?
You know, I don't have any remarks this evening, so we can go ahead and just turn it right over to Kathleen to get us started.
Great, thank you so much, Kathleen. Go ahead and take it away.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen and pull up the presentation.
Kathleen, do you want to introduce the other staff that are consultants that are here too?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we have staff from both planning and transportation. So, folks that'll be speaking tonight include myself, Jean Gatzit, Jean Sanson. I know Erica from Transportation or Transportation Director is also here, as well as Chris Haglin. I saw Natalie was here. And then Holly, who is also on our staff team. And then, we're going to be joined by our consultants on the 55th and Arapahoe Station Area Plan. So, that includes Mark De La Torre and Jay Rankins from MIG, as well as a couple other folks who make up that consulting team, and I'll let them introduce themselves when we get going. But I'm super excited for tonight. I'm really grateful to have these two groups back together. We've made a lot of progress since we met in April, and so looking forward to sharing all of this work with you and, you know, get your thoughts about our engagement strategy for the upcoming window in the fall. So, let's see. David just kind of ran through this, but you know, there was a ton of new material in your packets, and we're going to try to break that down for you and go through a couple key pieces tonight before we dive into the discussion. City staff is going to first present some of the key features of the draft plan, and then we will be joined by that consultant team who's been working on a key site, 55th and Arapahoe Station Area. As David mentioned, I'm sure there's going to be questions, so we reserve time for that. And then, we'd like to break into discussion and collect your feedback about key features of the draft. We'll do another quick presentation to talk about strategy for engagement, and then hope to hear from you on the kind of input you would want to hear from the community in order to support the plan as we work our, work our way towards completing the project. So, as I mentioned, big topics for tonight are the draft and our engagement strategy. I wanted to give you an overall picture of where we're at in the planning process. The work that we're going to be reviewing tonight is the result of two years of working with the community to learn about East Boulder, generate ideas about how it might change in the future, and weigh trade-offs about priorities for the sub-community. So, we believe that, you know, we're really at a milestone in the project where we're close to the finish line on the vision for East Boulder and how that manifests in a land use and connections plan. So, we've started thinking about implementation and how to make that vision a reality over time. So, we're here to confirm that the land use and connections recommendations have your support to move towards implementation planning, and we'll be taking your feedback along with the East Boulder Working Group's input to council in two weeks. We'll make any recommended refinements over the remaining weeks of the summer, and then plan to launch this engagement window after Labor Day. After the engagement window closes, we're going to evaluate the feedback we hear from the community to solidify recommendations. And staff will be working across city departments to negotiate options for implementation, and then bring a final draft of the plan back to boards towards the end of the year, looking for tabs recommendation and planning boards adoption. So, we're hoping to wrap the project and seek adoption from council in early 2022. And with that in mind, you know, the key questions for tonight are, do you support the land use plan, the connections plan, the concept for 55th and Arapahoe Station Area? And if the answer is no to any of these, what are the key refinements or changes that need to be made prior to these key features of the draft going to the community in September? Okay, so, let's get into it. I'm going to walk through, walk through those key features of the plan. The thing to keep in mind as I go through the material and as we talk about engagement is that this phase of the project is really the last major opportunity for community members to continue to help shape the outcomes of the plan and weigh in on recommendations for the future. So, that's really, that's why we call it the Community Review Draft. Those key features I keep mentioning are the vision, land use, and connections plan. So, we're going to start with the vision, and over the past two years, we've learned a lot about the people and places that make up the East Boulder Sub-Community. And I think part of what we found is that the sub-community is a little misunderstood by people who may not be regulars to the area. I think most people know that it's a job center in the city. There are over 800 businesses in the area and very little housing, so almost everyone working in East Boulder commutes. But beyond those great local businesses and the workforce that's so important to our local economy, there's a myriad of other amazing assets, parks and creeks and greenways, tight-knit residential community at San Lazaro, funky places to buy a banjo or learn how to paint. And so, those are the assets that the plan is really built on. Our mission has been to evaluate East Boulder and find ways to implement these six focus areas of the comp plan into the sub-community. And that came with a lot of discussion and weighing the trade-offs to be realistic about what is achievable in this part of the city. And, you know, I think we're landing in a great place. The recommended vision for the sub-community is that area neighborhoods will evolve to make the East Boulder Sub-Community thrive as an innovative, working, industrial sub-community of Boulder, where all community members have access and options for living, working, and playing. And, you know, I think this is a big challenge, this is not a small idea. The vision describes a place that maintains its industrial nature but welcomes new uses, the most significant of those being residential. And, you know, this really hasn't been accomplished successfully in many places in the United States. I think our team and the community is very cognizant of the history of gentrification of industrial neighborhoods in cities across the country. And so, you know, we've really studied the successes and failures of those places and have developed a land use and connection strategy that is designed to be strategic about change, but flexible enough to take advantage of opportunities if they arise. So, here's the land use plan. We reviewed a version of this back when we met in April, and boards gave great feedback that helped us make some key updates, like extending the reach of a mixed-use industrial land use to 55th Street Corridor and reserving land adjacent to KOA Lake for community industrial uses. The plan includes changes to existing land use, and those areas are outlined in yellow, redefining what some of those land uses mean, adding a new land use designation, and pursuing the annexation of important areas to help create more cohesive neighborhoods. So, what are the major changes? And this graphic compares the amount of land designated to each kind of land use in the BVCP land use map, those are in blue, to the recommended land uses, which are in orange. You can see, you know, that the most obvious shift is the redesignation of light industrial land to mixed-use designations. So, we're going to take a look at those. And the BVCP land use map includes a designation called mixed-use industrial. However, the definition of this is relatively vague, and it leaves some considerations about key characteristics to other guiding tools. Using the community feedback we've received about how mixed-use industrial neighborhoods should look and perform in Boulder, we're including a revised definition for this land use in the draft plan. We're also adding a new land use designation that will help guide redevelopment in the 55th and Arapahoe Station Area. This recommendation is also meant to provide guidance for other areas of the city into the future as we continue to plan for transit-oriented neighborhoods and shifting travel behaviors across the city. So, that's the kind of main components of the land use map, but I'd like to spend a little time describing how those changes, along with other recommendations, are moving East Boulder closer towards achieving a vision for the area. And so, first, design quality and placemaking. On the screen is the vision statement for this focus area. This was probably one of the most hotly debated focus areas, because it's, you know, it's mostly about aesthetics, and everyone has their own preferences and tastes for, for what they think is beautiful or appropriate or memorable. So, what we're attempting in the Sub-Community Plan recommendations is to remove some of the more subjective characteristics of places and focus on form and performance of space so that we can generate the types of places that people will love, but allow for that experimentation and unconventional personality to come through our very creative design community. We worked with the East Boulder Working Group to collect images of buildings, neighborhoods, and public spaces, and listen to find, find out what they loved about these images and how they might see these types of places come to life in East Boulder. This helped us generate a tool in the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan called PlaceTypes. Place Types provide an additional layer of information and guidance for the land use plan and helps set expectations about the characteristics and performance of redevelopment in different areas of the sub-community. As we move forward towards planned completion, the Place Types map and descriptions will guide key implementation steps for potential code updates, rezonings, the potential creation of new zones, or considerations about the creation and application of a form-based code in East Boulder. So, you'll notice that the Place Types Performance Standards combine expectations about things that are generally more land use oriented, like density and FAR ranges, with those that are more transportation oriented, like access and mobility. We're hoping that this planning effort helps us continue to move our practices forward, considering how environments inside and outside the right-of-way support and complement each other in places we all experience every day. The next major focus area is housing affordability and diversity. We used our Place Types performance and mapping to help evaluate the types of housing that could be located throughout the sub-community and how much new housing could potentially be added by changes resulting from this plan. Realistically, based on the land uses and place types the team generated, we could expect East Boulder to contribute between 2,600 and 4,400 new homes to the city's housing stock. That range is, it's entirely dependent on private redevelopment. Using the 25% requirement of new residential development allocated for affordable housing, this could contribute between 580 and 1,100 new permanently affordable units, should they be built on-site. And then, you'll remember last fall, we presented three different land use scenarios to boards and the community for evaluation and feedback. So, comparing our recommended land use plan with those scenarios, I think we've landed at a pretty healthy balance between, between the three. And a major reason for this is our strategic approach to identifying key neighborhoods where residential density could be well-integrated into some of these business-oriented places, and also help create 15-minute neighborhoods. And that, that 15-minute neighborhood strategy is a key component to our efforts for supporting local businesses in East Boulder. Being able to build a great network of business, workforce, and customer in East Boulder will help the area thrive and businesses grow. Additionally, the land use plan does maintain a significant amount of land that will be prioritized for industrial use. We made no changes to the general industrial land in East Boulder, so we will still have a place for those heavier manufacturing sites and businesses in the sub-community. We slightly increased the amount of community industrial land in the sub-community by identifying key areas where small businesses and small business space can operate freely, but still have great access for transporting goods. While the land use recommendations do change other areas of the sub-community from, excuse me, light industrial use to a mixed-use industrial category, the intention is to bring greater access and allow for more density in these areas so that we can safely integrate residential into industrial neighborhoods in a way that supports a solid network of residents, businesses, and workforce, so they all experience success together. For resilience and climate commitment, a big piece of the plan's contribution is tied to our mobility strategy and connections plan. So, Jean Sanson will talk through, through that shortly. But there are a number of other great ideas that have come from the community that we're looking for ways to implement as well. A pretty significant one, being a contribution to the city's urban forest, we'll be working with our urban forestry team to reevaluate priority planting sites to increase the sub-community's canopy from where it's at today, which is less than 5%, to the city's goal of over 16%, helping us manage a variety of climate impacts, including stormwater management, carbon sequestration, air quality, and energy use. There are also a number of potential capital projects, as well as opportunities for public-private partnerships that have been identified as potential recommendations of the plan. One such idea that the group is maybe familiar with is some of the initial concept work surrounding potential future of the Belmont Power Plant Site. And then, community members and city staff have also identified a wide variety of opportunities for the city to make greater contribution to our arts and cultural community in East Boulder. Some of these ideas include community cultural space as part of the programming for future renovations at the Municipal Services Center and landmark designation of the old mill site at Belmont View. So, now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague in transportation, Jean Sanson, and talk about how the Sub-Community Plan will make contributions to our access and mobility goals, and she will walk through recommendations of the connections plan.
Thank you, Kathleen. So, in regard to access and mobility, you know, the point of creating access and mobility connections and improvements to safety and comfort in the area is really to think about how transportation can work to support redevelopment and changes in East Arapahoe as it evolves over the next 10, 20 years, so that transportation is not necessarily an end in itself, but it's a way to ensure that we're considering all people, regardless of how they travel, and doing it in a way that supports the community values, many of which Kathleen just walked through. And so, as we know, much of East Boulder grew up around the car, the automobiles, trucks, and vehicles and such. And so, as we think about changing land uses in the area, we need to think about how to better accommodate and more safely accommodate different travel modes. And so, as you'll see, as we walk through some of these slides, there's some big moves. Kathleen, if you can go to the next slide, there's some new connections, and then there's system enhancements. What sorts of things can we be looking at in addition to what's already in our transportation master plan to support some of the recommendations that are coming out of the larger East Boulder Sub-Community Plan? So, in regard to the big moves, here we go. So, I don't think many of these should be new to you all. I think you've seen them in one form or fashion, but we're all aware that East Arapahoe State Highway 7 is our major east-west regional connection to I-25 and beyond. And East Arapahoe is the west end of a much larger segment where we're looking to develop in partnership with our communities to the east, a complete street that's going to include high-frequency, high-quality bus rapid transit. It's going to include a commuter bikeway and other features that are going to help people to safely navigate East Arapahoe with better travel options, both through the corridor, because we know it's a commuter corridor, and also within East Arapahoe and the community itself. So, that's one of our big moves. The next one is related to the HOP. So, we've had plans in the works for quite a while to extend our urban circulator, the HOP Transit Service that currently circulates through much of our community out east to the Flatiron Business Park and to 55th and Arapahoe. We're currently looking at the best way to design that service. It could look like a fixed route service. It could look like more of a transit-on-demand service, but that is a big move to provide that transit, that high-frequency transit service that's currently lacking in much of this area today. Micro mobility is our third big move, and a very exciting one, as we move into the world of incorporating dockless e-bikes and e-scooters into the area. There's a lot of excitement around this area, and frankly, it's one of the best ways to solve that first and final mile problem to provide an easy connection to people to get from, say, let's just say, the Flatiron Business Park to OZO. That can feel like a pretty uncomfortable walk, but might feel like a really comfortable e-bike or e-scooter ride. Curbside management is another big move. The idea there being that, you know, there's a lot of demand for curb space in our community, and particularly in East Boulder, as we think about just the volume of freight and goods movement that moves through this area. So, it's incumbent upon us to look at this area in a very focused way to ensure that as the city establishes policies for curbside management, we're doing it in such a way that accommodates freight movement, Uber, Lyft, pickup and drop-off, and other uses of our curbside space in a way that's efficient. And then, related to this, the last big move would be the 55th Street Mobility Hub, and you're going to be hearing more about this as our consultants speak to the Station Area Master Plan. But we really see 55th and Arapahoe being that anchor for mobility to the rest of the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, connected with satellite hubs, so that you could, for example, get off the bus rapid transit, get on an e-scooter, take that to another location, and then hop on a high-frequency local transit service. So, again, the idea is to start to connect these transportation options in centralized locations. So, moving on, Kathleen, thank you. So, I won't go through this in much detail, but, you know, a key component of the Sub-Community Plan is to develop new connections. As much of you know, they're very long blocks through much of the sub-community, hard to navigate, and the idea is to create a more fine-grade network of connections to move people comfortably through these areas. So, you'll notice there are several new connections proposed to be able to support the redevelopment and changes that we're looking at, that we just previously looked at in Kathleen's land use recommendations. And system enhancements speak to the types of system enhancements that we would like to see, whether they're part of the Transportation Master Plan or should, should be considered as part of Transportation Master Plan updates. You know, this is sort of a grab bag of recommended system enhancements, and I will say that you're looking at a work in progress. It's staff's intention to likely not necessarily pinpoint specific geographic locations for some of these enhancements, but to speak more broadly, for example, to where we would like to see street upgrades. So, for example, you'll notice that there are several, you know, indications along 55th Street. The idea here being that we are, we're reflecting what we've heard from the community in terms of the need to enhance the comfort of bicyclists, pedestrians, and vehicle movement along 55th Street, and are respecting what we have adopted as part of our Transportation Master Plan to do a corridor assessment of how that street might be upgraded in the future. So, there's an example of a system enhancement. Other types of enhancements Other types of enhancements might be more low hanging fruit and things that we can actually start to implement in the coming weeks or months. For example, putting some signage into the multi-use path network. Adding some of the missing sidewalk links that our community members have pointed out to us to our list of improvements that need to be made. So we're going to be working through the system enhancements a little bit more, but it would be nice to get some feedback as we move into the conversation piece of tonight's agenda.
Thanks Jean. So you know, how do all of these pieces come together? What could this evolution of East Boulder neighborhoods really look like? And I'm going to attempt to demonstrate this for the area of change where we're lovingly call calling the Park West Neighborhood. Because it's located on the west side of Belmont City Park. And I'll mention that, you know, Sarah brought this up earlier, but I got an email from Sarah Silver yesterday. And I hope she doesn't mind me calling her out, but she described the challenge of trying to understand and visualize changes just based on maps. And this is something that I hear from our working group members and community members all the time. So we have been building a three D model of the area. Our staff is all trying to get up to speed on the technology and how to share it with the community. But the tools we're using are, you know, for for lack of a better word, really heavy. I can't, I can't fly around and be very nimble about it. On a laptop with my home internet over Zoom. So I've got some diagrams I quickly made and some images of our model that I'm going to share. I hope that these are helpful and it would actually be really useful to get your input on on these images. Especially because we're trying to figure out the best way to communicate with the public. Who may or may not love maps as much as I do. So we'll give it, we'll give it a whirl. Okay, so not a map. This is that Park West Neighborhood as it is today. This is a bird's eye image from Google Earth. And so here's Belmont City Park. Belmont Road, Foothills Parkway, Pearl Streets down here. This is the Goose Creek Greenway. And then this is Sterling. And this is also Sterling. If you spend a lot of time in East Boulder, you'll know that most of the streets surrounding Belmont City Park are called Sterling. Okay, so then this is that same area with the with the place types applied. So this is that. Parkside residential place type, the trail oriented live work. These two reddish areas are the hands on industrial. And then this is that main street industrial. So we've built out in our model what these place types could translate to and the types of spaces that we're hoping that they would generate. So this would be that parkside residential opportunity. We're standing just south of Belmont Road. In the park and you can see how these townhome units front onto the park. And these new residential homes would have this great access and connection to green space. As you make your way south, we're now at Sterling Drive. And this incorporates our ideas about upgrades to this street as well as the potential for redevelopment. And a key connection between the neighborhood and a more eventful entry into and out of the park than what's there today. So now we've, we've actually walked all the way beyond the south end of the park and you can start to see some of that trail oriented live workspace. Or place type along Goose Creek Greenway. Today, this greenway includes some flood control facilities and a multi-use path. It has some great views to the west. But it's not particularly attractive and doesn't offer a ton in the way of amenities. So the the vision for this area is to make that greenway a centerpiece of the neighborhood where businesses and residents. On either side could really enjoy the green space in this industrial area. So this, this image also shows some of the the recommended street upgrades to Pearl Street, which is this guy here. And and then this image takes a closer look at how we're thinking about live work buildings of a more industrial nature in the area. And repurposing space that today is along here, this is a really, really long driveway. For more of a kind of boardwalk where some of these light industrial businesses could actually start to incorporate a retail component. This is another bird's eye view demonstrating upgrades to Pearl Street, those live work buildings. And how we're hoping to build in great active public spaces. As part of redevelopment to create those third places in the neighborhood that generate great activity. And help create local destinations for community members. So you know, I just want to reiterate that this plan is about evolving neighborhoods and. And evolution is a process that builds off strengths and little by little over time becomes something greater. So, um, I, you know, that was a lot of information, but wait, there's more. I'm sure there's questions. But they might just get answered by our consultants. So hang tight. I'm going to turn it over to. Jay Rankins and Mark Delatory to talk to you about another key site in East Boulder, the fifty fifth and Arapaho Station Area. And I will stop sharing. So I think, Mark, you should be able to share your screen.
Excellent. Thanks Kathleen. And thanks again for the opportunity to go discuss you tonight and where we've gotten through. On the fifty fifth and Arapaho Station Area Master Plan. As y'all know, we're nesting into a much larger effort and decided to dig into the details with you. Firstly, wanted to introduce myself. My name is Mark Delatory. I'm the consultant team project manager for this effort with M I G. I'm joined by Jay Rankins, Director of Denver Area Operations and Principal with the firm, as well as Josh Mallon. From Apex Design, the transportation consultant, and Rachel Schenman from EPS Economic and Planning Systems, our market analyst. So we'll go through a quick ten minute presentation and then hand it back on over to Kathleen. So going to try and again compress about a year's worth of work into about ten minutes or so. So I'm going to gloss over a couple of those things on the early end. But breaking it down into existing conditions, the community engagement to really direct kind of how we got to where we're at. And then we'll focus more specifically on land use, mobility and urban design. Beginning with the area of focus for the station area master plan, we are on the southern edge of the larger East Boulder sub community plan. Cornered around fifty fifth and Arapo. It's relatively about sixty acres south of the rail line. Just on that northern edge there. And we got through the technical analysis and initial input from a land use and transportation perspective. Really saw that there's an opportunity to leverage that transit investment. It's part of the identified Easter Apple Transportation Plan. By creating a mix of uses in the area and better utilizing land use and zoning policies. To create and affect some of that change that Kathleen was noting to deliver those attractable. Attractive and walkable neighborhoods and kind of maintain that unconventional personality and local culture. There's also opportunities to create additional bike and pet connectivity. Building on again that initial transit investment and focusing more specifically on mobility hubs, both added about the stations and throughout the rest of the development area. And lastly, and a really important one, and it goes back to identifying that that character and flavor of this area. There's, there's a strong desire and need to balance the provision of new amenities with very rightful concerns around gentrification. So the maintenance of that character and culture in balance as we move forward into considering change. From a market standpoint, there's a strong demand for office, industrial flex, retail, multifamily. From a suite of complementary uses in the area. However, there's no current incentive for redevelopments. Current landowners and properties are doing well with their returns. So not a lot of incentive currently to change. So when we think about that opportunity for growth and change to, to, you know, focus on the community. And you think about the types of policy and from a land use and. Development standpoint that can affect that change. So that change is it won't likely want to care without greater entitlements. Stamp engagement, we've been governed by the, obviously the working group, we've been working with the great sub committee from that group focused on the same specifically. Got a chance to engage the Community Affairs Council and opposed to a number of public meetings and focus groups focused at different points in the process to help guide. The vision components, the guiding principles and the various concepts as we look through opportunities and constraints of the larger stamp. Stamp boundary. Some of those guiding principles. Help not only think about conceptual development, but how we engaged and spoke to the community to ask questions and ask for input. So prioritizing transit supportive strategies, obviously at the the front and front and center of this process. Thinking about growth over time, right? Change doesn't happen overnight. Looking out twenty years and how can we facilitate incremental change? Through appropriate sequencing and development and delivery of community amenities. Maintaining that flexible development framework that ultimately stays true to the community input that we received throughout the process.
Great. So I'm going to cover land use and mobility. On the land use side of things. Mark highlighted some of the key parts of that. And I think Kathleen actually teed it up well, talking about the greater sub area. There was concern about integrating any new development into the surrounding area, making sure that it was compatible. There's concern about losing some of the employment space that is there currently. And also looking at ways that we could actually leverage the transit and other transportation investments in the area. So in addition to a gene had talked about with the improvements on fifty fifth. Or so along Arapaho, there's also plans to do a study along fifty fifth. So what we looked at was a, and we'll go back to that map in just a moment. We wanted to let you know what the legend was representing. So thinking about those place types. So land use component, of course, but also thinking about form and transportation and open space that would support those uses. We have four flavors within that TOD mixed use land use designation. That is in the draft sub community plan. The first is flex. That is really representative of what's in the Flatirons Business Park today. So looking at some of that extending south ball might fall in that category as well. Flex mixed use. So that would be really an emphasis on the office and industrial, but in introducing some retail and service. On the ground floor that would both serve the employment uses in the area, but also be accessible. Especially with transportation improvements to new and existing residents in and nearby. Next is residential mixed use. So this would be predominantly residential uses. But again, with some neighborhood scale retail and personal services, particularly on ground floors. You could think about that on key intersections, on corners, among ground floors of mixed use buildings. And then finally, something that we're introducing that is really, I think representative of sort of an aspiration for the larger area. But really trying to do it in a pretty condensed way, which is innovation mixed use. So this would be a combination of light industrial, creative office, retail services. You might have heard the idea of maker space or maker hoods. So that really being that sort of active engaging ground floor. We know that we can't support retail everywhere across this area, but we would ideally have that in strategic locations. So that's represented with the red hatch on the map there. So introducing a new connection east and west along. The alignment of Conestoga Court that exists today, which could have traditional retail as well as maybe some of the makers. Having accessible showrooms and tasting rooms and things like that for different crafts retail. And then also along Arapaho, building on the success of some of the sort of disparate retail locations and retail. Frontages that we have today. But again, leveraging the the transit investment along Arapaho. The plan to be our T station at fifty fifth and Arapaho as well as a longer term regional rail connection. That could come along the north side of the area. We would hope that there'd be a stop at fifty fifth to create that close proximity to B R T and some sort of a commuter rail. You can see those smaller purple asterisks throughout, we're representing some of the mobility hubs. I'll explain those a little bit more detail than Jean did earlier. But you can see generally residential makes use at the station itself at the intersection of fifty fifth and Arapo. Transition to the innovation mixed use to the north. And ultimately heading west towards the ball campus into the hospital complex, transition to flex mixed use and flex. Thank you, Mark. So we've gone through an exercise of doing an illustrative plan. The biggest caveat on any sort of an illustrative plan at this stage of planning, and it's sort of the sub area plan scale. Is I can guarantee that what gets built is not going to look like this. Well, the way, reason we do this is to begin to articulate some of the design intent. The idea of having setbacks of have not necessarily doing zero lot lines where we create a canyon effect. But relating to the street in a more effective and meaningful way. Thinking about how these different uses may be supported with structured parking longer term versus just surface parking. And then ultimately looking and informing the block structure, the transportation network and some of the market economics. The next slide actually begins to articulate some different ways that development could occur in the area. There was some some concern among stakeholders that the transformation would happen overnight. That the city was going to come in and, you know, take people's property or force them to, you know, change uses. And we've reassured folks that this is a twenty year vision for the stamp area. And development could really happen in multiple ways. It could be improvements to existing buildings to accommodate existing or new uses, adaptive reuse. Infill of some of the surface parking lots, or maybe it is wholesale redevelopment. But the really beautiful part about the vision for this area is that even if folks decide to stick with what they have today. It fits. Obviously, we don't want everyone to decide that or there wouldn't be, you know, large transformation wouldn't be leveraging that public investment that'll be required. But you know, there is a place for folks who want to stick with some of the existing uses or existing form. Lastly, would be height, really focusing the highest development that we'd anticipate probably. At the station just north of Arapaho, heading south, we transition to existing single family neighborhood and attached single family. So we would be stepping down pretty rather quickly to three or fewer stories. But as we head north to the rail and across the Flatirons Business Park. Stepping down to four stories and heading west to probably a three story scale. Next, looking at the transportation, mobility and circulation. If you have questions, Jean and Josh, I'm sure we'll be able to answer those. But a quick highlight for you. One of the things that we really want to do is leverage that transit investment, not just along Arapaho, but along fifty fifth. Looking at how do we make that more pedestrian and bicycle friendly and connecting folks to that in that first and final mile. Looking at a connected street network, really right now, the street network, it supports the existing uses fairly well. But thinking about this vision about flex, residential mixed use, innovation mixed use. We need to think about greater connectivity and access to ensure that we are creating a walkable, likable place. We need to think about curbside management, thinking about those mobility hubs on the map here. You can see we began to think about a hierarchy of streets. Really building on the street standards and street classifications in other parts of Boulder. But introducing some important nuances. So looking at where do we have dedicated bike lanes along the major arterials, thinking about how do we create pet and bike connections? Where maybe a street does not, you know, is would not be planned. So one important one would be along Conestoga Court, as I've mentioned earlier. This idea of an activation street, a really generous public realm. Creating a cafe seating zone, amenity zone, buffering the sidewalk from the streets. But creating a really nice area where people can bike in a mixed flow environment. We want this to be very slow. Where people are having to engage with each other and probably on street parking to support that retail and maker space. Next is the commercial street, pretty similar in its configuration. But we would not anticipate everywhere having those large amenity cafe kind of seating zones. The next is, I believe, the residential street. I have a little lag here for a second. Oh, here we go. Commercial street with multi-use path. Thank you, Mark. So this is something that we see in a couple of different places, the multi-use path being in place of a sidewalk and places where we could fit that. With a larger amenity zone where we might anticipate higher volumes of pedestrians and or bicyclists or those using other micro mobility devices. Residential streets really having that nice flavor and character with probably a little narrower sidewalk, but having tree lined streets. Again, having on street parking for visitors. And then I had mentioned that pedestrian bike access in places that might not have. A traditional vehicular access. And so we've seen this be achieved in some more recent developments in other parts of Boulder. But this would be something perhaps on the south side of the commercial, on the south side of Arapaho. Abutting the existing residential, a place where people express a desire for new connections. But not wanting motor vehicles, you know, passing right through their backyards or next to their backyards. Last piece for me, and then we just have a couple of slides on urban design, is the mobility hubs. I wanted to, I guess, clarify because there were have been some misconceptions. We're not talking about a big facility right at fifty fifth and Arapaho. In essence, there are enhanced bus stops serving the B R T at fifty fifth and Arapaho. We would, we would anticipate structured parking distributed throughout. The area perhaps embedded a little deeper could be a public parking structure, but not right along fifty fifth or or Arapaho. Instead, this would be a series of different elements. Jean mentioned several of those, the, you know, e-bikes, e-scooters. But there could be mobility oriented retail, thinking about enhanced pedestrian connections. Amenities for those using their variety of modes, long term bike parking. For someone maybe coming from the existing neighborhood to the south, wanting to use transit or visit some of these businesses. So along the top there, you can see a variety of different mobility hub elements. And then along the left, we started to think about where those might be applied throughout the area.
Thanks. Jay noted, we're just going to wrap up here with a few more slides, really focusing on the quality of the space. I think Kathleen noted it pretty well when she was trying to, or when she was describing the park west. When you, when you're thinking through plan implications only at that, that bird's eye view, you kind of lose a bit of the texture and the feel of the space. We want to make sure that as we thought through the implications of scale and volume and that texture, right? The industrial identity and all those different aspects that we heard were, were critical to this area and redevelopment. We wanted to make sure we are thinking about it in a way that aligned with expectations for redevelopment, but also contributing to those, those more publicly oriented amenities. Thinking about those transit stops and those enhanced transit stops and those mobility hub elements. And, and the character of those spaces in between. Thinking about improving that, that current, I think, presence perhaps along some of those major roadways. So looking north here on 55th, thinking about the conveyance of, of safe, comfortable pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Both north, northward on 55th, as well as throughout the development itself. When we think about the extension of Conestoga, that was a pretty critical piece as it relates to the activation street. So as we're looking, as we're looking eastward here on Conestoga and thinking about what the potential is for a new street to connect across 55th. With redevelopment supporting that, we want to think about the texture of the architecture that's already there and helps contribute to that. That unconventional personality, right? That, that flavor of this particular area. Thinking about being able to celebrate that industrial identity while still providing opportunity for redevelopment. That can, in part, from a district standpoint, help to support that both financially and in the character of it. So with that, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. Kathleen?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I'm going to pull up the, the questions. Let's see.
Kathleen, do we want to go to just general clarifying questions first?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can stay so we can all see each other and answer any clarifying questions, I think. Yeah.
Great. Oops. Had trouble on meeting there. So yeah, I guess I was going to go ahead and look for hands, right? Gene and Kathleen is that, and call on people. We don't have the raised, oh, we do have the raise hand function, I guess. So you can either use the raise hand function or raise your physical hand. And I'll call on the order that I receive, see people. So John, your hand went up first, so go right ahead and then let's try to keep, we're going to try to keep it to 20 or 20 minutes actually, because we have another section to go through. So try to keep your questions kind of brief. And if you have like additional elaboration, you want to do save that for the comments later. John, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. As someone who's joined in a lot of the meetings associated with this effort, I, I appreciate Kathleen's presentation there. So, thank you. I wonder if you could describe Kathleen. How this fits into the city bigger picture in terms of, of what changes and impacts this plan might have on the availability, for example, of industrial land within the city, citywide. So that we understand the marginal impacts on the city of what we're proposing here.
Yeah. So, you know, when we look at industrial uses and how industry in Boulder is changing. I think, you know, the plan really tried to first preserve that industrial, general industrial land entirely. So for heavy manufacturing, we still, you know, have heard from the community that we want a place for that. And, and so the, the land use plan for East Boulder preserves that. The, the other, you know, maybe different changes or other types of changes related to that industrial land and how they may impact the city overall is we're increasing by a little bit that community industrial land use and the amount of acreage that's dedicated to that type of land use. And so that's really oriented towards smaller businesses, smaller types of manufacturing, smaller types of industrial. And we've located those, you know, where we try to preserve some of that, the existing space for that. But also expanding the area for that along places where they have great access to transportation, because that movement of goods is so important. So then, you know, that big change is the amount of light industrial land. And so that's where we've made a, a pretty significant shift in the amount of acreage that's dedicated just for light industrial. Which today does allow, you can develop residential and light industrial today. But it tries to be more intentional about how we talk about where the best places for integrating residential into light industrial are. And so changing and updating, I think, that mixed use industrial land use category to be pretty specific about what we want those places to evolve to look like and to include. That's a, that's a change that I think will make a big difference in East Boulder, but we can also start to think about. You know, as we pick back up on the used table project. How does that, that shift the implications for, for uses in, in specifically industrial zones for other areas of the city? And are there other places in the city where we want to be really intentional about incorporating residential or retail in a, in a way that allows greater density? And that, that might be when we start to really start to apply that mixed use industrial land use category. So does that, is that answer your question?
Well, partly, I don't mean to monopolize the discussion here, but if I can just follow up with one additional factor or related factor. And that is, can you point to other examples within the city of a successful mixed use industrial residential development that we could use as a, as an example for what we're dealing with here?
I think the place that people have gravitated to and that does have a mixed use industrial designation is the Steel Yards area. I would say it's probably of a smaller scale than what we're envisioning for East Boulder.
Great. Sarah, I think you were next, and I think Alex, I saw your hand after that.
Thanks so much. And I'm going to, you know, how to bring my hand down in a second. Sorry about that. So these are, I have two questions. They're both numeric questions. What is the breakdown in terms of dwelling unit types that are imagined for these anywhere from 2,600 to 4,600 new dwelling units? And what's the projected number of jobs expected over time to be produced as a result of all this densification?
So unfortunately, I don't have those numbers for you. And part of the reason that I don't have them, but that we have them under our scenario testing and not modeling is that for, for these land use recommendations, we're breaking a lot of our existing rules. And the, the parametric modeling that we use is built off of our existing zoning. And so the types of units, we tried to describe that a little bit in the, in the place types. And, you know, some of the feedback that we got from the working group is it'd be great to have images to go with those descriptions to give people a better idea of what those types of, of homes could be. So that's something that we're thinking about adding. And then similarly for the, for the jobs numbers. I'm not able to project that because it's, we've changed the rules of, of how that space gets generated. And so I can't, I can't model it quite yet.
Will you be able to model it over time? Because I would think from a planning perspective. That would be valuable.
Yeah. And that's part of, I think, why we're trying to use these new digital tools. Is it will allow us to work back and forth to figure out how a specific code change or how a type of parking requirement might shift the amount of space that we're able to provide, might shift that unit count or shift the job, job projections.
Can I just follow up on that? I'm sorry, David. I just, it's a follow up specifically to that question. And it ties to John's question, which is, I would, are you going to be doing some maybe econometrics forecasting since the value of the land is going to change with the opportunity for residential development in industrial areas, the value of the land's going to go up? And I think you, it would be, I'm wondering if you're going to be trying to figure that out.
We, as of today, we do not have budget for that type of consulting that we would have to bring on a consultant to perform that. And there's no money allocated for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Alex, did you have your hand up before? And then I think Hutch also has his hand up after you. And then Mark.
I did not.
Go ahead and unmute Alex.
I didn't have my hand up. Mark can go.
Oh, you didn't? Okay. So I think Hutch, you go by Hutch, right?
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the industrial themes that I was hearing. But as a, as a non-planning guy, I'm on the tab. I'm curious whether there's any, you know, rent number per square foot or any other attributes of the space, which is basically required for our industrial stuff to survive. And if so, what is it? And how does that factor into all these amazing looking improvements that we make? Because it strikes me, these spaces are probably renting for pretty much what they can get now in Boulder's industrial marketplace. So I'm, I'm trying to think about the economics of the future industrial space. If a whole bunch of improvements have gone in in various ways and who would be there? And if those actually exist, or whether we're just not sure.
Yeah, I might actually ask Rachel from EPS, who's been working on the 55th and Arapahoe Station area from a market perspective to weigh in on that.
Definitely. Thanks, Kathleen. So like Kathleen mentioned, I'm with Economic and Planning Systems and we're on the MIG team. And we did the market analysis for the stationary and master plan, but the general market trends can be applied to the broader East Boulder area. And the, the industrial piece is, it's an interesting characteristic of this area, and it's a great question. And this gets back to the first question as well. There's a couple of things going on. One is the nature of the industrial uses in the area. The building stock, generally speaking, is older industrial. And the tenants that are there are utilizing the space. But what we heard, we did sort of secondary data research and then also interviews with, with real estate professionals active in the area. And what we heard was that once, once companies outgrow their space. They, they leave the area just because there isn't a space physically large enough for their use. Or, you know, newer industrial, the, the ceiling heights are higher, the bay requirements are different. And, and the physical building stock in the area just doesn't meet that requirement right now. And to your question, if the building stock in this area is going to change, it's likely not going to be that sort of true industrial space. It's just simply cheaper to build that space in, say, Broomfield. And there's also in terms of the users of the spaces. There's, there's what looks like an industrial building on the outside, and then there's who's actually inside it. And what we found is that a lot of the building stock in the area is actually being utilized as more of this flex space. Whether it's research and development. Your, your sort of fun functional office space. And so the rents that you can get from a more office oriented user are higher. And so who's in these spaces tend to be these more office oriented users who are paying more than an industrial user would pay. And so when we look at the changes and we've done some, some redevelopment modeling to look at what, what could go into these spaces with some of these mixed use prototypes. And generally speaking, you're, you need a flex or a high paying office user. And then there's, there's the impact that new tech users are having on the market. And when you have some tenants who are just willing to pay more. And that's where to Mark's earlier point during the presentation about no incentive for redevelopment. The buildings in this area are performing very well. They're generally pretty full and they're commanding high rents. Without that much reinvestment, because there is this demand for this older industrial space to function more as office. And so that's a somewhat roundabout way to answer your question. We do have numbers. We did a market analysis for the sub community plan in terms of actual numbers. You know, for the quote unquote industrial spaces, it's sort of anywhere from $16 to $30 a foot or more. And if you're, if you're building new or redeveloping, you're looking at the high end of that, just in terms of land and materials costs. To make a redevelopment work. So, and it is a challenge. It's, it's a challenge throughout the city and this area is no different.
All right. Mark, did you want to go next?
Sure, thanks. I take it from some of the prior questions that there is a assumption that by having more density, we'll have more jobs. And by having more jobs, we have more in commuters, et cetera. So I think I look at it differently in the sense of really the point of much of this change in zoning. And what I'm asking, I'll ask this as a question of step, isn't the point to, by densifying vertically and providing live work spaces that we in fact eliminate in commuting while maintaining our economic vitality for a broad range of businesses? And I, and I think about what COVID has done for many workers who have discovered the joys of working from home. I've worked from home for over 20 years. And for people who paint cars for a living or repair bikes for a living, they haven't been able to do that. But with a really truly live workspace, suddenly that's possible. And suddenly you eliminate commutes and enhance the life for a lot of people that outside of kind of sitting in front of a computer screen tech work, haven't been able to enjoy those kind of benefits. So I guess my question is, isn't that the point of really creating a broad range of live workspaces in this area?
And I would say, yes, you know, I think that's a major component of the strategy and the idea of introducing residential and the idea of creating these denser neighborhoods is to get some cars off of the road and really be able to provide people with those options for maybe living down the street from their office, maybe working from home, but being able to run down and grab a sandwich. All of, all of, you know, the benefits that come with kind of a more urban neighborhood are major components of, of both the strategy and I think major benefits to you know, changing some behaviors around driving by yourself in your car to work.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mark. Gosh, I don't see any hands up. So maybe I'll just ask it quick. Oh, and then the pizza. Oh, and then Lupita, can I ask first and then you Lupita? So my question just was for Jean Sansom. When I looked at the, the connection plan recommendations, there were just a couple of things that are in the TMP master plan that I didn't see. And I, I don't know if I should be worried about that. One that I noticed was one that comes up, has come up a couple of times, which is a connection from that levee path into the Central Avenue Park at the southern, south, kind of eastern part, as well as that northern connection. And another one is just out by the Airport Road connection from the, the bike park out to the backs of all those buildings. That we're still kind of, so I just want to, if you could just assure us whether we're giving up on those or those just didn't come up as something from this particular plan and that we're, we're still looking at them from the master plan. So are they two separate, separate use?
Yep, David, I'm glad you brought that up. So the connections plan, thank you, is not necessarily intended to identify all of the projects which are currently in the TMP. But one thing that I didn't mention in the presentation is that we are doing a scrub, if you will, of all of the eighty-seven TMP projects that are located in the East Boulder Subcommunity. So for example, you mentioned the connection to South Boulder Creek to the multi-use path. What we're recommending to do is to consolidate those to one connection on the north and one connection on the south where, where they're feasible. So I know that Planning Board in particular had to address that issue with a development review that came through. And the issue of being able to cross that levee was one that prevented the construction of that multi-use path. So that is an example of where we are identifying those changes that we need to make to the TMP to ensure that we can continue to advance the intent of providing, for example, connections between the Flatiron Business Park and the South Boulder Creek Multi-Use Path, but do so in a way that we know is viable. And then I would say the same, for example, the connection up, I think you mentioned one, to Airport Boulevard, part of which is being constructed, part of which is being reevaluated today to understand what some of the more viable connections might be around the airport area, given some FAA restrictions. So what you're going to see as we continue to work through this, and thanks for bringing this map up, is you're going to see a list of recommendations for changes that we'd like to see made to the TMP. You've seen some of the additions that we would like to make to the TMP. And then there are a series of connections, here we go, that we are recommending to be removed. Either again, because it was not considered a feasible connection, or you'll notice many of these connections, north-south connections to the east of 55th, north of Arapaho, which were part of what was called the East Arapaho Connections Plan, a plan that was developed several years ago, but was not fully vetted by property owners and the community and was not in fact accepted by city council, but had somehow made its way into the TMP. So again, we're looking at a lot of cleanup. So I would say thank you for paying attention to that. And if there are specific projects that you don't see, either in the list of changes or those to, to be removed or amended, please continue to let us know so that we can stay on top of that.
Great, thank you. And I'm sure Tab will be reviewing those going forward too. And I just, I wanted to hear that from you, Jean. Thank you so much. Lupita, you were next, and then we're going to go with Georgie.
Okay, so, um, I think Kathleen was the person who made the statement about that you felt excited about going and breaking rules. And I'm in, I, I'm in intrigue, but what rules you were not willing to break? So I've been trying to get at what has been the criteria that really is, you know, is central to you in this project. And that, that's my first question. So was there something that you were not willing to do in this exercise?
You know, that's a great question. We haven't gone through, I would say, a, a really comprehensive evaluation of the, the code changes that we would be making. But I think, you know, the pieces of the comprehensive plan that spoke most to this process and that was most consistent with what we heard from the community members was really, you know, the, the description of design quality, the commitment to fifteen-minute neighborhoods. And I think, you know, we are really looking for opportunities to advance some of our climate goals in this area. And so those are probably the, the the pieces of the comp plan that stand out in my mind. I think the, the, the challenge, the biggest challenge of, of the community process and determining how far the community wants to go related to our housing goals has been the, the one where I, I think the working group and the community has displayed really a, a pretty wide range of opinion on whether or not they want to have a ton of new housing in this area and, and change a lot of industrial land versus maintain all industrial land and have no new housing. And so that, that's the one that was, I think, the most challenging to find the sweet spot for.
Okay, so I had other questions. And maybe, maybe I'll just ask one more and then if we have a chance, we can come back. But so in, in, in more direct way or succinct way, this question already came up in terms of how does this project specifically can help us address our, you know, housing and work or jobs imbalance? That has, must have hap, must have happened in the discussions, must have come up. Because that, that is one of our biggest challenges in the city.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, when we tested those scenarios in the fall under our current code, we had really significant jobs projections. I think that the number of jobs in the area almost doubled. And also, you know, pretty significant increase in housing units. So there's only three hundred and thirteen homes there today. There's seventeen thousand jobs. This plan, you know, brings, I think an average of thirty-five hundred new homes to the area. So we're not even with the number of jobs, but I think what we heard from the community was that creating a one-to-one ratio in this area of the city is not what we're going for. We do want this to continue to be a job center, but we're strategically trying to integrate those housing opportunities to give people an option to live in East Boulder and support some of the existing businesses and workforce that are there by providing them with, with an opportunity to live near where they work.
So just so that I get, I, I, I'm clear on the, the approach that you guys taking, that your floor is not create more jobs that will increase our imbalance. That's your floor, making sure, not necessarily that you, you help us close the gap that we have, but you at least want to increase it. Is that, am I interpreting this?
I don't, I don't think that that's a, no, I don't think that that's a, a characterization that, that represents the land use changes. I think from some of Rachel's work and from what we know about how industrial space is changing and being used, a lot of that larger warehouse space that maybe at some time, you know, supported ten jobs can support significantly more. And, and I might ask Rachel to weigh in if, if she has thoughts about that. But, you know, I do think that with increased density and with redevelopment in this area, it's realistic to expect there to be more jobs here in the future.
Okay, so, so we're not saying not, but I just want to be clear in which direction you are guys taking us. And, you know, I'm, I think that just to be clear, we want to go in this direction and you're taking us that direction. I just want to be clear. That's how I'm reading this.
And we'll, we can also discuss that when we get feedback as well. Let, let me give Georgie a chance to ask your question and then we'll see if we want to do double dipping based on our time because we're over twenty minutes now. So, go ahead, Georgie.
Yeah, thank you. And Lupita's questions were along kind of the same line that I was going to go. So I, I, I wanted to understand a little bit more, maybe Rachel, you can elaborate because I heard you talk about how industrial is being used for office. And I, I have great concerns about that because it does two things. Number one, it displaces ultimately industrial because those, those renters can, can pay significantly more. And then, and then obviously the density of that office space, I thought Mark painted a beautiful picture of a bike mechanic, you know, living and working here. But then I heard Rachel talk about how this industrial space is really being used by high-tech office. And so I'd like to understand that difference and also kind of go back to what Lupita was saying around. Kathleen, I heard you say about thirty-five hundred homes added and potentially double the amount of jobs is sort of a general ballpark, is that? And that's two separate questions. So maybe I'll start with the question to Rachel is, is how this space is being used? And how do we make sure as a city, it's being used for industrial and not high-tech office? Are there, are there land use or zoning things that we can do to prevent the escalation of rents? To prevent the densification of this industrial space? That's, you know, more suit, may, maybe the community is looking more towards manufacturing, et cetera.
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's sort of a, a realm of ideas that guided a lot of this analysis. There's a couple of components of that. One piece is, is what the market is already doing. And part of that is just, you know, what industrial space in general is doing. To my point earlier about the, the physical nature of the space. And the industrial space in this area works for some users at some times. A lot of these companies will move in and then grow, which is great. They're growing, they're building, but that, there just isn't physically the space for them in the area anymore. And that's when you see them move maybe to Gun Barrel, more likely to Longmont or Broomfield, just for that physical space. Then there's also the, the functional space. And that gets to the older nature of the building stock. And that's a lot of times from, from sort of the market evolution perspective when we see these other sort of alternative user tenants come in because there is that older building that's at its base keeper and not really functioning for the originally intended user anymore and can be repurposed. And there is this, this tension between the sort of longstanding industrial nature of the area and the way the market is moving with these new, I'm not always office users. Some of them really are flex users where they need sort of the larger spaces, the higher bays. And they're doing R and D, they're doing, they need, you know, manufacturing space, say. And part of how we're getting at this from sort of a, a policy perspective is looking at what, what the area looks like and how we, in a sense, curate some of the uses we're looking for. And so one of the ideas that we're looking at is a district for a number of functions, part of which is parking. But also looking at what, what these first four uses are and can we encourage and keep and preserve some of the smaller, more industrial users? To Jay's earlier point about these makers, this maker space. Because that, that really is one of the, the biggest opportunities in this area. The large-scale industrial users, for better or for worse, are likely to migrate out. It's just the nature of the evolving market. At the end of the day, the, the land values in this area are too high to support traditional industrial use. If you're, if you're redeveloping the, you know, the rents per square foot you can get for an industrial building versus an office or flex building, they just don't support development, given the land value in the area. But how can we keep some of that industrial nature of the space through curating some of that first floor space? Creating affordable, smaller scale industrial for those startups or small businesses to start. And eventually, maybe they will grow and have to move out, but, but maintaining that character in the area.
So, so does that mean that the uses, the land uses that we're talking about include office as a use?
Yes, office is an allowed use. And I, I don't, I don't want to give an impression that all of the industrial space in East Boulder is being used for office. There really are artists in the area. Falafel King really does manufacture hummus here. We have a lot of catering companies. And these are users that can make a smaller industrial space work, but they need high ceilings, they need some of these HVAC requirements. And those are the types of things that we can control through our code, the size of spaces, the heights of, of buildings, of, of floors. And then, you know, the, the use table project is, is a place where it, it's possible to get into the details of really specifics about what's allowed or not allowed in different types of zones.
That's, that's helpful. I guess, and I'll, I'll stop and let someone else chime in. I guess my, my, my concern is if offices categorizes a use here, and Rachel just said the highest and best use is office, and this is a twenty-year plan, how does this ultimately just not migrate to high-rent, high-tech office if that's permitted in this use?
I, I think it's a threat, but we have to be really careful about, you know, preventing office from using some of these spaces. Office workers make up a, a really important component to our local economy. And also, there are maybe smaller businesses, creative businesses like architects or advertising agencies that need smaller space, need smaller office space. And when we restrict those uses, they also have nowhere to go in, in the area. So it's a balancing and finding, and, you know, maybe as Rachel said, curating those office uses is really important.
Yeah, if I could chime in really fast.
Yeah, absolutely, Jay.
Yeah, one example that we are very familiar with is the centrally side in Portland. They've actually gone through pretty nuanced zoning regulations whereby there's a certain flavor of this industrial mixed use that does allow kind of the full flex, you know, office and industrial. But there's others where industrial does have to be the primary use and office is subservient to the industrial. So you're going to have office, it has to be an office that's in support of an industrial use. What they have found and what we're thinking about, at least for the stationary area, is that the industrial uses, while there are some examples you can find of maybe going vertical with industrial, you know, second, third story buildings, more sort of harkening way back to some of the industrial. Most of that desires for the ground floor space. And so what we're talking about with the stationary is being more restrictive on the ground floor and then being more permissive on the upper floors where maybe there is multifamily residential or office allowed in those upper floor spaces.
Thank you. So we are almost to thirty minutes now. Are we okay for looking back? John and Sarah each have, want to take a second? Yes, are we okay with that? And then we'll, hopefully, we can move on to then the questions. So John, why don't you start?
Let me, okay. This is for Kathleen. I, I know that in the meetings that were held in association for this project, there was quite a bit of discussion about whether to devote a housing area to what we call missing middle or whether to focus more on providing stacked flats for affordable housing. Of course, that leads to very different outcomes in terms of both the type and the quantity of housing supply. both the type and the quantity of housing supply. Can you talk about the status of that distribution?
Yeah, so we, the the working group really pinpointed locations in those areas of change where they thought would be most appropriate to fill that missing middle category and and provide those types of homes. And so that thought is built into those neighborhood descriptions and the place type performance standards.
Okay. And so just to follow up real quick. So is what's in there now, is that the staff recommendation about what sort of the nature and distribution of housing that should be developed here?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're working on all of this material every day, but I think we're getting closer and closer on those place types to be pretty solid in our recommendations for how that gets mapped out and and what the standards include.
I do.
Great. And Sarah, do you want to?
Super, super easy question. The train stop. The train stop is at fifty fifth, just just north of Conestoga or sixty third, which was my recollection of where it was originally going to be.
So yes, originally, I think planned for sixty third and as part of this sub community plan, a recommendation is that we would consider either adding to or moving that station to fifty fifth, but I might let Jean Sanson talk a little bit more that about that because she's involved in the Northwest Rail Study.
Sure, thank you. Yeah. So just real quickly, there is a renewed interest and motivation at the state level and by RTD and potentially Amtrak to look at a peak service commuter rail sooner rather than later between Denver, Boulder and Longmont. That peak service would include one station in Boulder, and that would be located at Boulder Junction. The idea is to try to build something that might that would be less expensive than the full build out with more stations such as one out in East Boulder. So the idea is if and when RTD and other partners are looking to construct the full build out of Northwest Rail, and we would like to see a station in the East Boulder area. We would like to look at the area around fifty fifth as opposed to sixty third. That's the recommendation.
But there's a lot of, as with much of our transportation stuff, there's a lot of assumptions in there. There's assumption of money, the assumption of right, okay, just as long as we know. Thank you.
Yes.
Great. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and share my exciting little thing that we're going to, Jean and I are going to use here. So what we have three key issues that we're going to go through now, I think, before we have a presentation on public outreach, right, for the in the fall. So we thought we'd try to keep everybody on their toes and start with a random person and then go through an alphabetical order. And Jean, I don't know if you noticed, but Robert Hutchinson wasn't in the list because I wasn't sure he was going to be here. So if you could add him between John Gerstle and Mark McIntyre. So I'm spinning the wheel. And the winner is Alex. So Alex, you will lead us off. Think, is that what it says? No, it's Georgie. It went one past you, Alex. Sorry about that. So we can start with Georgie, and then we're going to go through, and then I probably won't bother to share the next time I spin unless people really like to look at it. So with that, Jean, go ahead and put up the key questions.
Let's cut up the key questions, but I might suggest that we do a short break.
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. Let's do our break. And we'll reconvene at seven forty seven, ten minute break.
David?
Yes, Lupita.
Well, people go away and take a break, which I will do too. Just when I mentioned you misspelled my last name.
Oh, I will fix that. I guess I'll have to display the spinner again.
Yeah. Next one.
Jean, if you're still there, would you mind putting up the questions while we're while we're on break? Oh, too late.
Sorry, Georgie, was that for me? Okay, Kathleen's got that. Great.
Thanks.
I'm glad you heard that since Georgie's going first off. I get I get so into this Zoom world, it's like I just, I it isn't intentional. I know I'm supposed to be trying to do more frequent short breaks, but.
This was, this has been such an interesting conversation. I think letting it flow was the right was the right thing to do.
Well, then we did a little longer than the usual five to seven minutes. So that's good. So. And Jean, you're okay. I've been calling on people and we're gonna, once we're all back together, I'll just hand it over to you and then I'll spin in between.
That's fine. Yeah, that was the, I think we just should clarify the intention that we would go question by go through all of the land use comments first and then move on to the connections comments.
Right. And then I'll spin the wheel between one and two and between two and three.
Okay.
And then we, I can display this dinner for the last spin so that Lupita sees that I I'm sorry about that. I actually, I typed in all the names without like looking at anything. And so I'm surprised there might be other typos in there, who knows?
David, you'll have to send me your, the link for the spinner app. I like it.
It's just like, it's just like this silly website. And all you do is you put a list of things in and it makes the wheel immediately. It's so cool. I've used it for nonprofits, for like raffles for nonprofits to raise money.
It's like one of those icebreakers for when you're not actually in the same room.
I too would like a link to the spinners, if you know.
I'll send it, I'll send it to both boards. I don't think it's considered a serial meeting if I send out a link to a website. So awesome. I think we're all starting to convene. Looking for cameras to go back on. So let's go ahead and and then Jean, Jean will lead us then through the key questions. We'll I'll go, I'll answer, try to keep our comments down to as close to, you know, one to two minutes as we can. I know that there's a lot to go through. And Jean, go ahead and take it away.
That's awesome. Great. And so we'll start with Georgie and then followed by Tila and Dave and then John Gerstle.
So first question, do boards support the recommended land use plan? First, thank you for the presentation. It was was really interesting. I think the work looks and sounds great. I I sort of tore the tail end of our conversation, kind of got to the meat of the issues that that I have on on land use here. And that while it sounds and looks great, using the term industrial, I I think in order to, for me to be supportive of it, I'd like that definition of what light industrial is to be much tighter. Because what I hear the market doing versus what we intend as a community may be different. And if the highest and best use of this light industrial is high tech office, and that is a permissible use within this space, I have no doubt that it will migrate towards that. And that we will, we will exacerbate our jobs, housing imbalance, and we will continue to eliminate the industrial and light industrial that the community desires here. I also heard, you know, the increase in housing, I think is great from three hundred and thirteen to over thirty five hundred homes. But again, if we are are potentially doubling or more the jobs that will or could exist here, then we're taking Boulder backwards. In in what we can do as far as in commuting. And while, you know, I understand that some people will now be able to live on site, the net effect to Boulder will be detrimental on a commuting standpoint as well as the the overall imbalance that this would create. And so the, I guess, I'd like to separate the ideal from what will happen and try to isolate what could happen and make sure we address it before we we just idealize what light industrial could be here. So that's that's my response. Thank you.
Thanks, Georgie. How about Tila?
Hi. Thank you for the presentation and especially for all of the background information at the end of the packet, all of the the detail on the on the meetings. It was really informative. And shows how long and coming this process has been. I'm here tonight mostly looking at the transportation side of things. I have very little to say on the land use, except to say that I do support this proposed plan. I am sensitive to sort of some of the nomenclature being a little dense. And when you hear something like mixed use industrial, you expect it to be industrial uses and to sort of exclude kind of office uses. I think that's a fair critique. And it might just be a mistake in labeling, but not really. I do think that there has been some expression of a preference to keep some light industrial uses, but it also includes a whole lot of service industry things that are hard to define. So this is definitely a step in the right direction and in particular, expanding the use of mixed use development in general. I think that's something that's sorely missing throughout Boulder and to the extent that this will increase flexibility of thinking, flexibility of permitting flexibility for for using spaces differently and less rigidly than in the past. I think this is an excellent step in the right direction.
Great. Thanks, Tila. Okay, next Dave and then John Gerstle and then Hutch.
Great. Well, I'll just say that, yes, from a from a land use perspective, I'm generally supporting this. Land use is a higher level designation and we are defining new categories to meet new demands and new times. The concerns that I'm hearing are valid. And so I think that it will be important as we as we go forward to try to get more granular. I think that the place types were a step from the last time we looked at the plan that was pretty informative on that. And then, of course, that raises more questions because it is more more informative. So when we see place types, suddenly we're seeing some of the visions of what can go in there. I do think that with place types, perhaps we could start looking at a little bit more granular percentages of different uses that we'd like to see. And and the out of those place types, I assume that we'll have new zoning districts, not the existing set of zoning districts. So we have some flexibility to maybe address some of these concerns of, oh, gosh, we don't want eighty percent office space in these buildings. We want, you know, forty percent or something. So to try to to try to get, you know, get a little bit more precise on on the percentages of the different kinds of uses we'd like to see and then look at zoning mechanisms to drive that. But MUI is makes sense to me. MUTOD is something that we've sorely needed in this city. A transit oriented zone is a wonderful thing to see in this city. We don't have it yet. And places that are looking at how to center appropriate density around development or transit corridors. appropriate density around development or transit corridors are happening all over the world and all over the country. And I think it's great that Boulder is taking that step. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Okay, John and then Hutch.
Okay. Well, I have to say that I think George made excellent points and in general, I agree with his thoughts on that. My concern, as my colleagues on planning board know, has long been with what actually happens in industrial areas when they get developed or redeveloped. And the latest example was in the Gunbarrow area, Celestial Seasonings, where we saw what is intended to be an industrial area being developed for a purely residential project. And given the use codes, we didn't have any control over that. We had to allow it. And I think that's exactly what will happen here, either with in terms of residential or office uses in what's, what is called here mixed use industrial. And and so I think that that has to be much more firmly controlled before I would be willing to support the land use plan that is being proposed here. Secondly, another concern I have is to be more explicit about how the residential activity takes place. And I'm particularly concerned about the decision about how much gets devoted to to high density stacked flats type developments and how much might be allocated to what what we call missing middle type developments. Because I think when people talk about live work situation and they talk about people living in this area and working in this area, we have to provide, if we're serious about that, we need to provide the sort of housing that the people who are working in this area would seek. And that is, I think, in many cases, what we call the missing middle. So I'd like to make that point. And thirdly, I think that we have spoken in very general terms about both the the Belmont Power Plant area and, and again, we've almost not spoken about what happens in the airport area, both the airport itself directly and the area surrounding it, which is now primarily industrial. And I have no problem with that, but I think we should, that should be explicitly discussed in the land use plan and we haven't talked about that tonight or or very much in the past at all. And with respect to the airport itself, I'm very aware that the city has commitments to the FAA that it needs to honor, but we're talking about what happens in the long term. And we need to have some explicit discussion about what we think is going to happen at the airport in the long term. I'm not saying that we shut it down within the next 20 years even, but this planning effort is supposed to be thinking about what happens over a period longer than that. And thirdly, at the, or maybe I'm on four now, at the, at the power plant, we have talked in very general terms about the desirability of eventually having that facility as some sort of a cultural or arts facility, among other things. And I think that's, that's an excellent idea. But in those discussions, we need to be aware both of the cleanup concerns of the power plant and also the fact that the water rights in the lake that made that area very attractive will probably continue to be held by public service or XL until they sell it when they decide they don't need it anymore. And that could may lead to a big change in in the nature of that area. If there's no more, more lake there, baseline reservoir. No, sorry, not baseline reservoir, but Belmont Lake. So those are just a few of my concerns.
Thanks, John. Okay, Hutch, you're up, followed by Mark and then Lupita. It's still here. And do we want to take the questions down just so that we can see each other a little more? I think folks know what those are, at least for the rest of this round.
Fine.
Okay. All right, Hutch, if you're here, you can go ahead. You can unmute. Okay, we'll circle back and give Hutch a turn. Perhaps he just stepped away for a moment. Mark, are you ready?
I am. I'm gonna break some of my own rules and not really answer those particular questions. I just have a couple of comments. First, I really want to honor the work of staff and the working group, having been part of working groups that have taken 18 months, two years to do their work. I was always sensitive when people who were not part of the working group came up and said, well, did you think about this? Did you think about that? And I said, well, yes, we did. So anyway, I think that what was presented here represents a tremendous amount of work and I'm generally very supportive of it. Regarding connections, I talked with Jean a little bit, Jean Simpson today, a little bit about this. And I spent some really time, I spent some good time with the maps. And I've come to the conclusion that what I really, what for me as a transportation advisory board member would be super helpful is to show a simple map showing all of the non-automotive connections currently with the gaps highlighted. And then a subsequent map showing how we would treat those gaps. And the gaps might be segments that are missing or the gaps might be areas that are too large, too large an area without a cycling transit pedestrian connection. I find the current mapping to be really hard, to be really challenging, even for a map guy to kind of get my head around what it means. Is this something that's going to be built or not? So anyway, I would ask.
Can I just, we are going to get to the connections question next. This one, and you, you weren't, you were gonna break your own rules. Try to keep us to land use right now and we'll do connections with that.
You know, I did this last time. I answered, the other questions were on the screen. I asked, okay. All right, I'll get to land use.
We'll forgive you.
Okay, sorry. Well, you can skip me on connections then, okay, in trying to get us done on time. In regard to land use, I spent some time with the plan looking at this and looking at it in light of the city's latest climate commitment, which is 70% reduction from 2018 by 2030. That's eight years. And I don't see under the land use design here, serious commitments that change the built environment in ways that are quantifiable by saying how many more, if we build this, how many more bike pet transit trips are we able to shift from vehicles, from single occupancy vehicles or other vehicles? How, what will this do to our BMT? What will this do to induce bike pet transit trips? How will this, these land uses house workers that are currently in commuting? And so I see this in many city documents where we have, we have these really aggressive goals. And, and our current, and our current plans and plans and documents that are under construction don't fully address our climate commitment. And that's, that's my single biggest criticism of land use connections, every aspect of this, is that it doesn't seem to take into account the latest urgent commitment of the city to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 70% by 2030.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, Lupita, then Sarah, then Alex.
Make sure first.
We can hear you, Lupita.
Sorry, I forgot. I pressed the wrong button. I wanted to be in mute and not missing my face. Sorry about that. I was here. So yeah, I think I spoke a little bit in the land use. I am a little bit concerned, actually more than a little bit concerned. I am seriously concerned about the direction in which a project like this takes us by looking at the land use that allow us to increase the gap between our, you know, housing needs and the job creation. Also in terms of the light or the industrial use, which has been in our conversations in the last few meetings repeatedly because we becoming increasingly concerned that those spaces are becoming fewer and fewer. And I think it's becoming a little bit more urgent for the planning board, at least some of us, to become a little bit more protective of it, precisely because it comes up regularly and there's always a reason why maybe it's not okay here or it is okay here, but not in the future. So I think the future is here. We need to be a little bit more concerned about the spaces that we have. And so I think Georgie brought up that specific issue in a way that I think everybody should be able to understand. Because having that definition of industrial as office, I think we already seen what may, may very likely happen unless there are restrictions or some guidelines set in place. I think that that's something that I think the developers as well as the city needs to kind of see our perspective, I hope. Because seriously, from the, from, as a planning board member, we try to look in the long range development of the city. And we have been having this challenge of grappling with individual projects that oftentimes don't necessarily contribute to the vision that we want for the city and that our citizens want and have for the city. So at some point, somebody has to do the hard work or the painful work. And so I, I just want to be, you know, clear about it. This is a very difficult piece to agree with because I don't think it takes us in the direction that our city needs to go. And that is not even counting with Mark just talked about with regards to our real challenges with climate change, which as you know, we're living in right now. Yes. I hope that's clear enough. So I think in my perspective, from my point of view, it's hard to support the plan use as it's coming right now unless there's some clear guidelines. But I think that's enough.
Okay, thanks, Lupita. All right, Sarah and then Alex.
Okay. So not surprisingly, I have like a three-page treatise that I wrote out that I'm gonna try to get down to the nubbins. I will start with, any proposal that includes the following statement should be seriously reconsidered. And this is a quote from our own, our, this project. Mixed use industrial neighborhoods are not common in the United States. There are a few places in the world that have successfully achieved integrating industrial and residential uses. These are typically separated and are considered incompatible due to conflicts over noise, potential smells or emissions, trucking and access, among other issues. And yet, this is what a huge swath of our land use redesignation proposes. I was really sort of stunned when I read, you know, this, this quote from our staff pointing out that this has been, this doesn't work. And while I really appreciate the staff's idealism that it could work, I'm quite concerned that it will not work because it doesn't work. And it points exactly to what George has said and what John has said and what Lupita has said about this mixing together of industrial, what we hope will be light industrial, but will likely be offices and residential. But we, so I want to support everything George said. I want to support everything John said. I want to support everything Lupita said. And I want to make a couple of other comments that haven't come up yet. In this mixed use industrial framing, you are, you have made the comment that the assumption is that we'll put a lot of permanently affordable housing in this industrial area, in these industrial areas. I am not really clear why, at a time when we're talking about racial equity and environmental justice, we would be putting low and moderate income residents into what we hope will be light industrial areas. That seems to me to have completely missed the point of these whole, all these discussions about fighting racism and trying to address systemic racism. That's item number two. Item number three is a reiteration of what John said about missing middle. In this case, particularly forms. I was really surprised during our retreat when we were told by Jay Sugnut that our missing middle strategy is a financial one and not one about form. But form matters and we don't have, we have very little between single family homes and high density residential. And we have to, we must try to figure out how to get more missing middle forms of housing into the city. And the East Boulder Sub Community Plan seemed to me to be an opportunity to do that. But in fact, we have only a few small spaces where that's proposed. We need much more of those forms throughout the East Boulder Sub Community Plan. And those forms should not be limited to middle income families. Those should also be for low and moderate income families. They also want to live in houses with yards or townhomes or cottage ports or whatever the form might be. And I think this all comes back to this fundamental challenge of mixing industrial and residential. And I realize, right now I'm in Washington DC and I've gone to see the whole, all the new funky areas that have been built and they are a mix of offices and residential, but they are all very high end. They're very high end. There is no affordable housing there and it isn't. It is absolute gentrification. And it's been going on for 20 years. So what's being proposed is not going to produce affordable housing and it's, and it's, we need to separate out as much as we can at the most granular level, that which will be industrial, that which will be office and that which will be residential. And we must do it because we also have a problem in this, in our use code, in our, I'm sorry, in our code in which if, if an industrial zone touches a residential zone on one sixth of its boundaries, it can become residential. Residential is always a higher value than industrial and we will just keep losing more and more industrial land. So you know, there are many things, I know this, you guys have been working really hard. And I think in some ways what this gets down to is the granularity question. But Boulder has not been all that great at, but super granular when it comes to individual parcels. So we have pretty broad definitions. So this would require, you know, to use Kathleen's framing, really changing the rules. And I have a feeling that because this has been driven in, because there's been a lot of voices from the development community and you even say in here the change in the study is not likely to happen with greater entitlements. A big part of what's driving this is the idea of creating those greater entitlements. That should not be what's driving this. What should be driving this is what's in the Boulder Valley Plan. And I am done. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, Alex, you're up.
Yeah, having less experience with zoning and our land use tables, the visuals that you guys presented tonight really helped me develop an understanding of the land use typologies that I think you've been alluding to in the past and that greatly helped my understanding. And I would imagine as you do public outreach, it'll be beneficial moving forward. I think that teams done a good job catering solutions that are unique for East Boulder. Working in the sensitivities of Boulder overall with the unique and changing land uses out there as things transition. So overall, yes, I am supportive of the land use plan. as things transition. So overall, yes, I am supportive of the land use plan. One big hope of mine would be that as redevelopment occurs, that access to that rely more on structured parking than surface lots or free on-street parking.
Great. Thanks, Alex. And if Hutch is back, we can circle back and let him have a chance.
If he goes on, I'll stop sharing my thingy.
Hutch, if you're here and would like to speak to this, you can just unmute. But if not, we'll keep going and we'll keep trying to rope you in on the next, in the next round. Great. Thanks, everybody.
Let me ask this. Did, did we want to have time for any, any of the things that came up to be addressed by the presenters? Or should we keep going? And, and do that at the end? How, how were you all thinking? Did you want to say anything? Or should we just keep going through the feedback at this point?
I think the feedback has all been super, super helpful. Looking back through my notes. You know, the only thing I want to make sure that it's not misunderstood or mischaracterized is the idea that we are locating locating affordable housing in industrial neighborhoods intentionally as a way to produce that affordability. I don't, I would not say that's our approach. Our approach is providing a diverse mix of housing types in mixed-use neighborhoods to create 15-minute neighborhoods. So I just want to make sure that that's not misunderstood.
If I can respond to that, I was not saying that you're putting them in light industrial areas in order to make them affordable. But you very clearly state a priority of innovative mixed-use is ample residential options amidst the light industrial, especially affordable housing. So it's, I'm just, it's, I'm, I'm responding to what's in the report.
Okay. Okay.
Great. Well, then I'll go ahead and with the corrected spelling, spin the wheel for the next round. And the winner is, oh, I'm going to have to spin twice because it's going to be Georgie again.
We said you don't get to go, you don't get to go first twice.
Oh, now it says it's Tila. Okay, there we go.
I got confetti too, didn't I?
No, you get confetti. Let me, I'm sure.
Okay, so, so this is the connections plan.
Correct.
Yes. In general, I do support the, the proposed connections plan. I, I, this is kind of where I was parking my thoughts, similar to what Mark had said about trying to be impactful. And really, this is a large chunk and an evolving chunk in a place to really change how we are approaching, how we think about the city and how, how people should be getting around or not getting around, or what they should be expecting of their streets, because we have a chance here in certain places to just build it fresh. At the same time, I think some of the things in the connections plan, especially the enhancements that were shown highlight places where we have not in the past adequately thought about connectivity with different modes. So for instance, like the, one of the enhancements, and I, and I recognize Jean said it was a work in progress, but was better signposting between the multi-use path along South Boulder Creek and the Flatiron Business Park, because there's, there's very little connectivity now. It's kind of long been on, on the books as maybe hoping for one or two connections. And those are very essential connections because today people not in motor vehicles and not in trucks are scared off of 55th Street. And so this is the only way for them to access that section. And we've done a poor job of doing it. And the fact that we need to put signage on the one existing connection, which looks like you're doing the wrong thing. It's a, right? The cyclists are left with the absolute drugs. It's a drainage ditch, people, which must mean it floods during bad conditions. And this is the only connection we've managed to build so far. That is a far cry from what I see as the aspirational tone throughout this document about having, you know, flexible connections and connecting multimodal and all these micromobility devices. In the new places, you know, the corner between Valmont and 47th and Pearl, like, great, that looks nice and permeable. Same thing with the station area. Really permeable by these smaller modes, but it highlights to me that we have failed on some of our existing infrastructure. And I would really like to see more attention paid to fixing those past mistakes. In particular, connecting to some of these office parks or to the Flatirons Business Park more more directly, more welcoming and more feasibly. So and that highlights another, I'm not quite clear on whether we are treating this as a 20-year planning horizon, when Jean also says we're looking to rethink how we do the TMP, because the next TMP update is going to come much sooner than that. And in particular, I'm hoping that, and this is the same street I talked about at our last joint meeting, 55th Street is a huge barrier. It's a highway, a de facto highway. And I can understand how it happened that way. It was kind of on the edge of town before. But it is an untamed beast, and I don't see enough effort right now in this connections plan to tame that particular beast. Again, with the, with the new sections that we're building, new connections and new roadways, they look lovely. I think that the variety of kinds of roadways and the different names are a little bit unnecessary. But it all tends to just obscure the fact that we have a many-headed Hydra running right through this plan. And it's called 55th Street. And just to say, we recommend a corridor study for it to fix it, make it a complete street at some unknown point in the future is deeply unsatisfying. So I'm hoping to rethink 55th Street sooner. It should operate more like, you know, a, a definitely a corridor, definitely an arterial roadway, but not the scary thing that it is now, because there's no reason to think that this micromobility pilot that we're about to start is going to go well. I think my last comment is that the focus, focus on micromobility fleets and these transit hubs, these mini transit hubs, pretty interesting thought. I believe that they tend to overlook the use of privately-owned micromobility devices that we're already seeing on our streets. And so to focus on them as being part of a B-cycle fleet, or, you know, part of a City of Boulder sponsored program is overlooking the fact that they are revolutionary, they're affordable, they are on the streets now, they are coming. There's a massive influx of inventive power going into making the, the batteries for such devices better, for making them usable for different kinds of users with different levels of ability. And so to say that they're going to be prioritized on one or two little streets on the, on the corners is again highlighting our failure to accommodate them and connect them using our existing multi-use path network or our arterial roadways where they're scared off now. So I think that we should be focusing as a much more urgent matter on bigger changes that will lead us to bigger impacts toward our, say, greenhouse and climate initiatives as part of the connections plan, because we're letting the big beast go untamed right now.
Right. And was I next, Jean? All right. I'm wondering about the randoms of this field now. I'm sorry, we're almost in the same order. But anyway, everything that Tila said, I agree with a really great points. I, I think I also, and we're, we're still early in the plan, so I understand that a lot of this stuff is still going to get worked out. But I don't want to be too conservative with regards to transportation. If we do put in more car circulation in places like the Stamp Area, I'd like to make sure that they're really de-emphasized, because that's not very many square blocks. And so people can go 15 miles per hour or less. And if they're in a car, or maybe, maybe some of them don't need to be open to cars. And and really finding, really envisioning how the pedestrians and the bikes enter and exit the very important places they need to go is important. So just keep, keep thinking about all that circulation from emphasizing the pedestrian and and bike, because with the transit core, transit hub there, we're, our vision is to make it a lot more interesting and exciting to go without your single occupancy vehicle, right? So that, that's the real priority is, is to make sure that, that it's welcoming and easy for this new world, because you know, with the timeframes that we're talking about, a lot of these shifts are really going to be happening by then. So. Sorry, Jean, you were muted, but I muted before I started.
All right, great. John Gerstle, you're up, and then Hutch, and then Mark.
Okay, well, I, I think I agree a lot with what David said and Tila. The, the challenge here is not to be too conservative. But one of the things I'd like to point out is that I'm, I'm very concerned with making this area as much a part of Boulder as possible. And right now, it's to some degree isolated because of the Foothills Highway. And very few crossings of that highway. There's a, there's a couple of bike tunnels and a couple of intersections. And it serves to physically isolate this neighborhood from the rest of Boulder. And I think that we should be thinking about how we can do more to integrate it with more bike paths can crossing the Foothills Highway, for example, to, to make it more, more integrated. Beyond that, I can just say I agree with David and Tila.
Thanks, John. Hutch, if you're here, you can take a turn and unmute and speak. And if not, Mark will get ready for you. Now's your time, connections.
Well, I don't want to repeat what I said mistakenly at the wrong time, so I won't. But what I said about connections still stands. I just, I wish I had a better map to help all of us plan to make real connections.
And I think I wrote down something about identifying those gaps. And I think that's where a lot of this, this work is going. Okay, Lupita, then Sarah, then Alex.
I don't have a whole lot to add about this. I, I think that some of the people have brought some important points. I didn't get to speak before, and, but Sarah did bring up something regarding equity. That was part of my questions earlier on my list, just in terms of making sure that some of the proposals we see going forward, we are more deliberate in the way that we treat, you know, especially in this area where we do have enclaves of some of our, our more vulnerable communities, where I think it would be a good opportunity to include in this development elements that integrate this usually disconnected communities. And so in the, you know, breaking of rules, that would be one that I would like to see broken, one where we do not segregate the other, but integrate the other. And so that, that will make it, I think, whether it's, we're going through the transportation piece, how do we know that what we're proposing will serve the needs of some of our communities within the City of Boulder that maybe will not be able to afford a electric vehicle, for example? Just as a point of reference.
Thank you, Lupita. Okay, Sarah, Alex, and then George.
So I'll just, I support what has been said before, and will add just one thought, which is some of the micromobility stuff, which are really interesting ideas, and obviously already rolling out both in Boulder and across the, many places across the country, aren't necessarily utilized, can't, can't necessarily be utilized by families. And we have to make sure that we figure out the first and last mile for people who are, who might have one or two children with them, or an elderly relative, or, you know, is coming back from the grocery store and doesn't have a car, isn't going to use a scooter or a e-bike. And so we just need to keep that in mind.
Great. Thanks, Sarah. Okay, Alex, and then George.
I think this plan does a really good job of building a grid where there isn't one today. And that's really important for easing pressure on the nearby arterial streets and creating a more walkable area. I think the network as shown supports the proposed land uses. It's rooted in best practices. I feel like it's doing so without any planned extravagance or grand expenditures, which is something I don't think we always achieve when we're doing visiting exercises. So I think that was really well done. Tila mentioned earlier the importance of 55th Street. We have very few north-south arterials in town, and they're very vital for people cycling and walking. And so it, that will be a critical next step after we, we've looked at Arapahoe, but we need to take a closer look at 55th, which I see is called out for a future corridor study in both this and in the TMP. One nitpick within the current draft is the rendering for 55th Street, I think as a retrofit accomplishes a little, but it's not all that imaginative or rooted in best practices for what we want to see. If we were to rebuild 55th, it shows a little paint and some flex posts. And if we were to reconstruct that street, if we wanted it to align with best practices for safety, we would want to reconstruct it with a little safer facilities, backup curb for people walking and biking. I hope to see the lowest, low-cost opportunities really called out in the 90% draft of this in the implementation section. By shining a light on those, I think it'll be easier for transportation and mobility to insert those into upcoming CIPs where appropriate. And one area I see an opportunity for coordination is, it seems like we're about 10 years away from rebuilding East of Arapahoe. At least that's what transportation leadership has indicated to me. And so we could see some redevelopment in the area before then. And the placement of transit stops is something that I think should be coordinated with redevelopment. And it could also be coordinated with our upcoming East of Arapahoe Multi-Use Path Project, where we're going to rebuild some of the bus stops out there. And so if we were able to determine the ideal stop spacing and the placement of those stops, we could determine if some of those we, that are out there today, we want to remove them. And so there's no need to upgrade them right now. Or if there's one that we want to be, that we want placed in front of a future development, that that developer knows that we want to do that. So I think taking a look at stop spacing and the specific placement sooner than later could benefit both this effort and that project. Overall, supportive of this network and think it could be best communicated with a single map that shows not just the projects that have come up through this effort, but overlays those on top of the already-planned TMP projects. Perhaps it could differentiate between the two. But staying that total network, I think, would help the community develop a better understanding of what you're trying to construct out there. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Alex. Okay, and George?
I'll be, I'll be quick. I don't have a lot of commentary on the actual plan itself outside of sort of how the land use marries with what's proposed. My, my biggest concern is that is
My, my biggest concern is that is, is to mitigate in commuting. And with the, the, the land uses it currently stands, I don't know, I don't, I'd like to understand the data around sort of this plan, kind of, kind of what Mark had said in your first set of comments, Mark, I thought that was really interesting and enlightened around just trying to understand all the data of how we're getting people off the road, how we're, how we're, how we're meeting our climate change goals. And I think that goes hand in hand with, with the land use and making sure that we don't have a jobs housing imbalance here. So that's, those would be my sort of thirty thousand foot comments. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, George. Okay, I think we are, we are through the list for this question. Dave, do you want to spin again? You're muted. Dave, if you can unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. I came up with Alex. Hopefully you're ready.
Alex, are you ready to jump back in? So the third question is around the recommendations for the 55th and Arapahoe Station area.
Sure. I don't think I have a whole lot to add, but in addition to what I'd said about land use and the connections plan. One thought, I guess, is throughout Boulder, what a lot, what motivates a lot of our decisions is preserving views of mountains or providing access to open space. And I think one underutilized thing we, we have, we don't do enough of is provide public access to rooftops. Seeing the success of Avanti downtown, the longer waits for a table at the rooftop of the Rio, the public space on top of the side of the former Daily Cameron Building. I think it'd be good to integrate some sort of, either it's a public space or just places where customers have access to a place with, with great views. And perhaps the, the best place to do that would be in the vicinity of the, the station at 55th.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And then up to George and then Tila and then Dave.
Can you repeat the question for me one more time? I think I understand him, but I just want.
Do you support the proposed concept for the 55th and Arapahoe Station area?
So I, I think my comments first, for the first question are the same here. So maybe you can just ditto me for, for question one. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, George. Okay, Tila and then Dave.
Okay, I forgot to, I'm in the wrong spot. Um, I, with the caveat that, as Mark said, I guarantee what you see here is not what's going to get built. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to nitpick. In general, I really, really like what I see here. And let me tell you a couple of the things that I do like about it as, as just things I'm hoping will, will remain. I, I love the obvious permeability throughout the site, the cross plazas, the places that people are likely going to be able to access on foot and probably going to choose as walking paths on foot or on bikes. And I like that there's an understanding that pedestrians and cyclists and other micro mobility modes will be using those things. As I mentioned before, I thought having these four different flavors of streets was a little bit much. I thought it was just too much categorization and not necessary. And in particular, I really liked the idea of the Activation Street on Conestoga Court. If, if, if I'm understanding it right, it would kind of operate and feel like that main street in the Twenty-Ninth Street Mall. Not that I like the Twenty-Ninth Street Mall that much, but that seemed to be the kind of thing that you were going for. And I thought that just, you know, three or two blocks long on one axis was maybe a little too little. And so I'm curious about making it more of a district and having one of the intersecting streets, the yellow residential street that's, I think, unnamed on the area master plan concepts. I'm looking at page one oh three out of one ninety-nine in the packet. Trying to have more than just one Activation Street would help create a feel of, of a, of a kind of a general area to be instead of just the one, one spot to be and instead of clustering everything all in one, one drag. The, I had one more thought on this. Oh, I appreciated the, the plan multi-use paths and trying to integrate those. Again, this is trying to avoid some of the mistakes that we've had that I talked about my last, my last little rant, because I think that this is helping to, to integrate multi-use pass access across the site and to kind of pinpoint when people are on smaller devices to pinpoint where they want to be. They'll have the ability to kind of go right there. And I really like that. One other thing that I really like about this is you've tried to create a grid. But in clear spots, you have offset some of the intersections so that it doesn't necessarily look like a grid from the road user's perspective. It kind of keeps all users of the road, and in particular, the motor vehicle users, sort of a little bit more attuned to what's closer to them and what's right in front of them because they don't have that, you know, two thousand quarter mile view. Because they'll just have to navigate these things and that, all of that kind of participates in creating a sense of space where you have to be more cognizant and smaller people around you, more cognizant of the near area and drive slower. And that's, that's really good. So I understand it might not, you know, end up being this final alignment, but those kinds of tricks are really great. I note them and I applaud that. The final thing that I really liked about it was planning for heavy vehicles and routing for them instead of making the large, you know, semi truck that's delivering stuff. Sort of the default design vehicle for all of these streets, I think, actually making it difficult for such large vehicles on some of the streets would be a desirable thing to do, to route some of the heavier, slower, lumbering, noisier, crappier traffic kind of on the perimeter, I think is, is a wise move and something that we should be trying to do elsewhere in the city. Lots of cities have designated truck routes. We don't in particular. But where we're envisioning something like this with a lot of large transit vehicles and trying to concentrate some industrial and some, you know, retail uses and things that will have some of this kind of traffic. To not say it all goes everywhere all the time, but to say certain times and places it's more appropriate. I think you can accomplish with, with road designs like this. I think that's about all I have. I really liked the pedestrian bike emergency access street and I was kind of bummed it was just relegated to one edge. I understand why, but if, if you could, if we could see more of that, I would love to see more of that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Tila. Okay, Hutch, welcome back and we'll circle, we'll circle you in in just a minute after a few other folks and give you time and space to answer any of the questions that you'd like, since we missed your comments on land use and connections as well. Right now we're providing comments on the fifty-fifth generation, fifty-fifth and Arapahoe Station area master plan. Okay, so I have Dave, John, and then Hutch.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I really love the comments that have been said so far. I think that I, I, I agree with Tila's comments on, on transportation completely. So I won't repeat any of those. I love the plazas on the concept and I'm hoping that the outcomes can really really have a lot of these smaller kind of places where people gather outdoors. It really makes for some, some fabulous places. So that, that's really a great concept. One thing that strikes me at looking at this area that's going to be a challenge, and I want to acknowledge it, is that there are currently a lot of very beloved little restaurants and shops in, along Arapahoe there that you know, and this changes that segment pretty drastically. So I'm, I think the public's going to be a little bit nervous about losing their, is it Pico Mexican restaurant or their, I, I think maybe Blackberry, it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things there that there's an Indian restaurant. There's a lot of nice businesses and people are going to want to see an evolution that won't cause us to feel like we're losing our personality. But I think it's the right thing to do in a transit corridor. So hopefully we can find ways to do it smoothly. It is a little bit asymmetrical. The south side being so close to residential, I see that we've gone with lower building forms to try to kind of taper down to residential, which is a little unfortunate, but I guess that can't be helped because we don't want to put the taller buildings too close to the residential neighborhoods. But I would just kind of try to see if we can, you know, see how we can kind of make the north and the south side of Arapahoe somewhat feel compatible with that challenge, knowing that we do have that challenge that the south side gets closer to existing residential. And I'll just take the opportunity to then reiterate one more time that I'm hoping that some of these concerns with things like housing types and, and mix of uses can be ironed out so that we don't have quite so much reluctance because I, I do think that, that there are opportunities once you get a little further down into the zoning designations to address some of that.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, John and then Hutch.
Well, thank you. I, I agree with most of, of what I've heard on this topic. In general, the, I have no major problems with the physical layout that is proposed here, both in terms of streets and, and buildings in general. But my concern is, once again, the classification of mixed use and what, what the ultimate fate of that will be given our experience. And so I would say my, my comments again, as I mentioned previously, to, to the concern with not the physical form, but the use that is allowed in these buildings and to assure that it will continue to be a place where service industrial can actually be found rather than just be permitted and, and yet not found there. I, I want to keep a tire store and a garage available to us in Boulder. And this is the area where it's most likely to be possible unless we make it impossible by our activities today. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Okay, Hutch, welcome back. Hope you're doing, I hope you're feeling all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have the staying power for the whole thing at the moment because I, I think, I think I can stay one hour less than the number of damaged ribs at the moment, but thanks for letting me come and go. And if I make faces, it's not because of anything that's going on with the content of the meeting. I, I only have two comments and they both reflect the things that just came up and the others. One is I'm resonating very much with, with what John said, that I, I, I think that unless we take some care, the economics of an improved offer will make certain types of things unavailable. And, and I, I think we have to think about what sort of, what sort of structures enable that, you know, is it, it is almost as if Boulder needs a slightly shoddy zone somewhere where certain things can happen and where you know, the artistic types can, you know, feel more at home or wherever. And I, I don't know what to, what to do about that thought in the planning guys. But because the reality, as soon as there's much in the way of amenities, amenities are always scarce. Everything gets bid up. And, and so it's almost as if my, my wish is that within the overall area, since this is sort of our playground zone, a little bit more than other parts of town, we, we might even think in terms of sequencing, you know, okay, there's this bit. It really is, it's time to get improved. You know, these buildings are just about to fall down and, you know, things are a mess here and these streets are disaster and there are safety problems here and there. And but over, over there, we'll let go into genteel decay a little more before we do something. So that, that's more philosophical point. But I, I think the hard point in this is that there may be things that we do kind of, that, that actually do affect the phasing of what happens where. And what genuinely can, can benefit from these things. And I like what all these plans look like, believe me, and it looks great. So, so that's, that's one topic. And I, I think the other, the other topic is that although, although I agree with somebody else, I think it was somebody on the staff that said, look, the, this, as, as we do this planning, transportation is sort of the service element, but there, there are ways in which when, when things are very, very, when, when they become multimodal destinations in particular, as soon as there's a decent number of people hanging around, stuff springs up as long as there is some flexibility of the spaces to be allowed to spring up. And so the, the, the transportation stuff will drive some of the organic stuff. And I'm not quite sure where that happens, but I do have my hopes around that 55th area that I think there's enough goodies that you guys are thinking about there, where that could be one of the things where just the patterns of where people are going to do some walking. And to me, the key is always walking. As soon as people are walking, you have a different interactive construct, you know, you can nose into something when you're walking. You can't nose into something when you're even pushing your bike. Figure out where to put the bike or whatever. But we're, we're basically creating a mini walkable neighborhood there, or at least parts of it, which means that parts of it need to have those capabilities of, of then putting in place those niche and service businesses that are, that are amenable to higher traffic. And I didn't, I'm, I'm not a planning guy, so I don't know how that, how and when that fits into this whole process. But the interplay between the transportation, particularly the walking element, including, you know, when you get off your bike or your scooter or your micro mobility vehicle. The, the walking thing actually drives that, you know, and, and as soon as you have a high walkability neighborhood, you know, the data's in, the value goes up a lot. So don't try to put any low rent stuff right there in the high walkability bit. It's not going to last. It's going to go higher rent whether you want it to or not. So those are my two reactions on a high level.
Thanks, Hutch. Appreciate you hanging in here with us. All right, Mark and then Lupita.
So, so I don't, I don't have much on the transit hub. I, I will say that the idea of smaller, more frequent transit hubs is, is mobility hubs is, is like smaller, frequent, more frequent buses is, it, it, it makes things work a lot better for people. I, I do want to emphasize that at 55th and Arapahoe, that the two BRT stations slash mobility hubs need to be fleshed out with curbside management for shared vehicle, for Uber, Lyft. Not that I'm an advocate of them, but, but just, let's just acknowledge that there may be, there will be times where people get off the bus and into a shared vehicle onto a shared bike, onto a shared scooter. Any, any number of things, but so I would really like to see those designed and fleshed out as, as true little mini transit stations. And I think the success in the before times of the new transit station at Pearl and Thirty-third, you know, that was quite successful until everything went to hell. So anyway, I, I'm, I'm excited by this whole concept and, and the more frequent location, one block, another block that, that a user can walk, a business user, I would like to see this as something that an out of town business user could end a business meeting, walk out with their briefcase, jump on a scooter, go to the 55th and Arapahoe BRT, catch the bus east to the Holiday Inn in Lafayette or wherever else they're going and, and just skip the rental car. That I think in the future, we're going to see that sort of thing if we have these kind of accommodations for them. That's it.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, Lupita and then Sarah. And then I think we are
I appreciate Mark making the comments about the, the, the visual, mental vision that he sees, you know, that will be used in the space because I was kind of going in another extreme. Is that really talking about, you know, like a business person and what they will do here and leaving the town? When I was on the, on the other extreme about, you know, how can we When I was on the, on the other extreme about, you know, how can we make sure, or I will encourage the developers in our, in our city to look at this space and how we can serve our families that are already here. And so the envisioning of a scooter, I have a hard time thinking about our family being served that way. So I would like to expand that vision to include some of the other demographics, you know, of, of family types or residents, citizens that are in, in our city. So that, that will be something that I would like to see more of. So one is about how do we serve our, our families? And I like it to be in a more deliberate and explicit ways, so that I can all have that vision as well. And also with regards to what could be done to serve our sizable and highly esteemed nonprofit and artistic sector in this community? You know, we haven't spoke about, this is a good opportunity where we can also do tremendous good for the city and their vision, but focusing on some of these groups that are vital and important, I mean, vibrant part of our city that we don't often talk about. So I just wanted to bring those back into the discussion, so that our vision becomes a little bit more comprehensive.
Great. Thanks, Lupita. Okay, and Sarah.
Thanks, Lupita. You, you stole what I was going to say. I think this would actually be the perfect place for the kind of public arts and culture center that you've heard the planning board propose as a way to address some of the community benefits phase two conversation. Because if you were able to build such a thing here, it would be a destination point for people not only from Boulder, but people east of Boulder. So I just want to agree with Lupita that I think you should be planning that into this area. Now that said, I have some other comments I'd like to make. If I under, if I read the material correctly, essentially, the intensity level of development in this area would be similar to Transit Village, which is very intense. And I'd like to make sure that we correct some of the mistakes that I think were made in Transit Village. First and foremost, trees. Transit Village does not have enough trees. It's extremely, I guess urban is the right term, but it, it lack, it's like this, you walk into Transit Village and it's a neighborhood unlike any other neighborhood in Boulder. It's not a lot of green, not a lot of trees, very uninviting and kind of boiling hot and lots of canyons. And I think you want to get away from that. So more trees. Off of what Alex said, I'd like to talk about the opportunity for green roofs and that that's another way to utilize some of that space. In terms of the place types that you've proposed, to be honest with you, they all looked like various iterations of the same idea. And they were hard to distinguish. And I would, I would urge you all to try to be much more clear about the differences. It all looked sort of exactly like what you would expect from, i- it, it kind of looked like a high-end America, USA. I mean, all kind of looked the same and with, you know, garage doors and anyway. So I would urge you to really try to differentiate what each of those place types is really, what's really unique about each of those place types. I, I also want to talk about form-based code, which was only mentioned briefly by Kathleen, but clearly form-based code is going to be part of the conversation for this area. Form-based code is solely about making development go faster, which is fine, but it has nothing to do with affordability. And affordability is our problem, not design. Although design might be the thing that gets people interested in talking about projects in Boulder, affordability is our issue. We need to figure out how to make sure that we have onsite affordability in this area. And I would actually suggest that we contemplate a higher level than 25% of permanent affordability in this area. If we want to make Mark McIntyre's idea of the, the bike repair guy actually being able to live near his bike repair shop, the only way that's going to happen is if we have enough permanently affordable housing that he can either rent or buy. And we've got to go higher than 25%, I think, in this area. I, just as a just point of disagreement with David, I think it's very important that we, we lower the height near the residential. I mean, he didn't say not to do it. I'm not disappointed with the idea that we're lowering the height near the existing single-family homes that are, that back up to the southern, this southern extension that we have added, even though it's outside the boundaries of the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. That area behind there is actually small, single-family homes on small plots. They're the kind of single-family homes that even a density advocate could think are great. And I wouldn't want it, wouldn't want us to create a conflict with that neighborhood. And I guess I have a question, which is really, how would the actual station be paid for? I, I guess I'm not really clear how, where the funds for something that's a, a place would be paid for.
And I might ask Jean Sanson or Jay Rankin to talk about our, our concepts around the district and implementation for the stations.
Do you want to speak to the BRT improvements first?
Yeah, I can speak to the physical BRT improvements and the phasing and timing of that particular project. So we're still in the very early stages of designing the BRT system for Arapahoe. Next year, we will be initiating a project in coordination with the Colorado Department of Transportation, and it is a state highway, to move from the concept plan that we had in the Eastern Arapahoe Transportation Plan to a preliminary engineering design, which would include the actual design of the station. And when I say the station, I do mean the bus platform. So the bus platform and the amenities that we would want to see at those bus platforms. And then we have to go out and get funding for that. So RTD doesn't have a heckle lot of funding at the moment. We have seen, we are going to see a big infusion of money through the state with Senate Bill 260 passing and our largest transportation funding bill getting signed by the governor. So, you know, I am optimistic that there will be funding opportunities to not just build the platforms themselves, but also to find the funds to operate, to purchase and operate the vehicles for the BRT system. And then as that relates to sort of the other types of amenities we would want to see at that particular station or bus platform, I'll let Jay speak to some of the conversations we've had about how to move those mobility hubs forward.
Yeah, so the, kind of the bigger idea would be, and I think Rachel maybe alluded to it earlier, but a district designation. And so there's a lot of different types of districts that can be put in place in the state of Colorado. Metro districts are a frequent one for a large-scale redevelopment, but there's also general improvement districts and all their flavors. And so the idea would be that there'd be, or the, the purpose of the district would be that as part of the development and part of the development fees, that we would look at parking. So parking management is one aspect. So it could be actually looking at shared parking opportunities now that would open up some of the existing surface parking for redevelopment. Long-term, ideally, some sort of structured parking that would have a public purpose. And again, with TDM and or transportation demand management and all sorts of things to reduce the overall demand for parking as well, but understanding that, you know, people are still going to drive here sometimes. Other aspects that would be the place making, which I think you were asking about, Sarah. So those would be plazas, enhanced streetscapes. And with that could also be programming. And one of the other ideas that we had that we're investigating still and kind of seeing what the kind of market economics might be able to support, because you can only extract so much. But it's some sort of maybe master lease or management of the ground floor space too, at least in certain areas, to actually facilitate, you know, the curation of, you were talking about artist space and spaces and things like that, that the market might not bear naturally. So, so those would be the, kind of the four big pieces that we're exploring as part of a district.
Great. So Jean, we're now going to go on to a presentation on the fall engagement window.
It looks like Mark's got a hand up. I think there might be one more question. And then I just wanted to do a quick time check of if folks need a, a stretch minute before we jump into this last one, or if we should just power on.
I just wanted to, Sarah, the Transportation Advisory Board has been advocating that parking in the public right-of-way not only be de-subsidized, but that we make money from it to use for TBM products like mobility hubs, like, you know, incentives to get people out of their car. And that's something that we, we failed in doing that. But right now, transport, parking, and in the near-term future, parking doesn't pay for itself, doesn't pay for the administration of it, much less actually provide funds. But CAB has been quite vocal in it and, and strong advocates that we should be making money from parking for doing exactly what we want to do out here with transit and other mobility improvements.
If I can just respond to that, I appreciate that that's something you all are pushing for, but it always has to be done within the context of addressing the needs of low and moderate income families and the, not just their economic needs, but many of those families, their cars are their business. And we have, this is something that we've seen with Ponderosa and other low, moderate income developments. And it's just, it's never as simple as, let's just slap a $50 something or $100 something, or let's get rid of parking. So I appreciate that you all are pushing for that, and I appreciate you bringing it up, and it's always this balance.
But when we charge $17 a year for a 200-square-foot parking space on Mapleton Hill, and that doesn't cover the cost of actually issuing the permit to a homeowner who owns a four, five, six, $10 million home on Mapleton Hill, and we charge them $17 a year. Anyway, we're off on a different subject, but I would love to pick this up with you. But sure, there are equity concerns as well, absolutely.
And I'll just point out that both of our boards had a chance recently to weigh in on parking in great detail. And I know I heard a lot of these points made. Great. So Jean, did you, why don't we go ahead and give people like a, just a three-minute bio break, and then we'll be back at, by 10 after at the latest. Is that okay?
It sounds great.
We're going a little bit longer than we had hoped, but a lot to talk about here. So yeah, Jean, I forgot when you share your screen, you have to hit the button twice. And so I spun the wheel without displaying last time, but oh, well, next time. It's always fun for people to watch you sit and talk when they can't hear a thing you're saying. All right, hopefully people are getting ready to come back on. There's Sarah, thank you.
Kathleen, I'm going to ask if you can go ahead and share the slides for this.
Good.
Yes, I definitely can.
Do we think everybody's back? Are we ready?
Looks like we're getting there. See. Turn on your video, just a signal to us, you're ready, we'll get going.
David, it's Tila. I'm back, but I'm not going to have my video on for just a minute.
No problem. Great. Okay, thank you for weighing in. Georgie, Lupita, are you okay with going forward? Well, Kathleen, why don't we just kind of do a slow roll forward and hopefully they'll get on, since we're a couple minutes past nine, 10?
Okay, that sounds good. I think, you know, the, the previous conversation and, and people's thoughts around the land use plan and connections plan and concepts for, for 55th and Arapahoe gave a lot of insight into what you might be looking for in community reactions and responses to the, these ideas and, and proposals as we move into our next big phase of engagement, which, as I described, is planned for this fall. So I'm going to turn it over to Jean Gatzza and let her describe our strategy for the fall engagement window. And we'll have a discussion about what you all hope to get out of that, that window. So go ahead, Jean, and just give me a heads up when you want me to advance a slide.
Yeah, you can go ahead and go on to the next one, Kathleen. That's a good point. I've such a great conversations, I've been taking. Yeah, you can go ahead and go on to the next one, Kathleen. That's a good point. I've such a great conversations. I've been taking notes as we go about pieces of analysis that I think we're gonna need to develop for the community engagement or some of the frequently asked questions and some of the key messaging to 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 be able to help communities, community members understand the benefits and impacts and and rationale for a lot of these pieces. So the purpose of this next engagement room window is really being in that home stretch to circle back to both ensure awareness that the plan's happening and what the recommendations mean moving forward and to and together impact together feedback that will really help us truly refine and improve that final plan. We're, I think we're gonna, we need to hear a lot more from the community about prior, their priorities for the implementation pieces. I think we've we've heard about phasing in various comments tonight, and that will that'll be important as we as we continue to develop the implementation part of the plan as to what's most important to do in the near term and what would be in those mid or mid or long term piece of strategies. I do wanna emphasize on Kathleen, I think maybe it's the next slide. Yeah, you can go ahead and move ahead. I just wanted to say that in one of the, well, let me move to this one and I'll hit that and then in one of the next slides. We really want to build on this capacity that our community has demonstrated for virtual engagement. Citywide, this is, this is a theme of our community has learned how to engage virtually and has come to really expect on demand, you know, information that they can reach and understand and be able to participate at their convenience and not have to show up in person. We will be targeting our engagement resources with the in-person event events to harder to reach populations or those populations where they really, it's it's much harder to engage online or not as comfortable. So we're gonna be working in that direction. We've definitely established great tools. I mean, we've, I thought we were really impressed with the community members in our last engagement window last winter. Both the participation in the online events and the participation in the online questionnaires. You know, just really great feedback. And we had some, we had some really nice work with the, especially our event. Well, I think two, two of the events where we had breakout groups that were led by our working group members and participated in the, in each of those small conversations as well as the event that we held in Spanish. It was online and virtual, but we we were able to have some good conversations with those community members with that, too. Let's see. I think one of the key messages here is that we're not starting from scratch. We need to be able to demonstrate where the feedback that we've, that people have given us already fits into this plan. And Kathleen, you can go ahead and move to the next one. Big picture, really, you know, are we on the right track? Is there, is there something that's truly not in the direction that people want to go? One of the very intentional things that we asked in the last engagement window was around some of this tension that the folks have talked about tonight about conversion of industrial land to into housing to potentially add some of those housing types or forms that that folks have talked about for the missing middle or lower, low to moderate income. But the, I mean, the result of that is displacing some of the the industrial or is it emphasizing the industrial and adding some housing. And then there were questions about, you know, mixed use. And so I was trying to pull up the reports from those just to refresh on some of those feedback, the feedback that we got, but but the the majority was around being really strategic about the changes and a lot of support for some mixed use areas. So I think that that's one of the things that we need to demonstrate is here's what we heard. And here's how it's showing up. And is that what you meant with the feedback that you've given us? Our working group members have asked us to ask folks, you know, are we being visionary enough? And I think that these, the comments that we've heard tonight align with that as well as what are some of the assurances and cautions that we can build into the plan to make sure that we're getting the things that we're intending? Can you move to the next one, Kathleen? And I think I mentioned this, too. Diving deeper, some of the specifics, we're gonna, we're gonna wanna there are gonna be some folks that are gonna really want to dive into all of these place types and all of the detail. And we're gonna want that feedback from them to refine and improve all of the the specific details for the key recommendations around housing, local business and implementation. So with that, it's building on what we, what we've already heard and talked about tonight. I think it would be really helpful for us to have feedback from you around the types of things that would help you gain assurance that we we've made the revisions in the plan and the plan reflects the vision that the community wants to see in East Boulder and meets the goals that we are committed to be to meeting from the comprehensive plan. Kathleen, anything else to add with that?
Um, no, I think, you know, just I would mention we're planning for this engagement window to take place in September and October. We've got a variety of of methods that we're gonna be using. And so we'll be taking your your input and feedback to, I think, first create the sort of educational materials that will supplement any type of questionnaire that we put out there as well as develop, your input will inform how we develop those questions and then analyze the feedback to deliver back to you when we come back with final recommendations towards the end of the year. But that's it.
Great. Do you folks have questions before we jump into comments?
I see John's hand.
Great. And I can help out with that. And then I think Tila and did I see other than one more hand? So John?
Yeah, thank you. So can you describe a little bit more? How many public meeting, you mentioned that you would have a public in-person meeting or two as well as online stuff. And in my opinion, the the in-person meetings are extremely valuable and provide feedback that you don't get online. And so I'm just wondering how many in-person meetings you're you're contemplating?
Well, honestly, with the, our approach that we're that we're thinking about and feel free to give us direction otherwise. As far as resources and staffing, we're really thinking about the, you know, the main engagement, the like overall citywide targeted engagement to still be virtual with an an event or more and an online feedback form forum on our Be Heard Boulder platform, but then targeting in-person events potentially with, you know, very, you know, targeted populations. So we're thinking, you know, for sure about the San Lazaro neighborhood. And really focusing those to going to where people are, meeting people where they already are with the considerations of making sure that it's safe, feels right within our, you know, COVID regulations and and just in general of feeling like that's an okay way to gather.
I think we have three events specific that would be in person. So one, as was mentioned, would be the San Lazaro community meeting. And then two opportunities for property owners to come in, look at the maps, point at where their property is, talk about their concerns. So those are the the three that we have planned right now.
My comments.
Okay, Tila?
Thanks. I just wanted to point out, like, as I mentioned earlier, there's been a ton of background work, twenty-four meetings, some in-person, some virtual. I just wanna do another nod to the amount of of public outreach that has happened so far. And so I've scanned those. I won't admit I've memorized them or read them carefully. But my question was, how much outreach to older adult populations has there been? I have two, I have all four of my parents, you know, in-laws and things all alive, and they range in age from seventy-two to eighty-five. And so we are in the midst of trying to figure out where people should live, their various levels of cognitive and physical decline. And it's really opened my eyes to the opportunities for a kind of communal living situation that's not a retirement community. Some members of my family really don't want to go into a retirement community, but would be open to going into an apartment. Because there's, you know, no landscaping to take care of. There's neighbors, there's elevators, that's all on one level, that kind of thing. And so the the kind of smaller and affordable housing opportunities that I'm seeing, you know, glimmers of here would potentially be answer a lot of questions. And and the and the other thing on my mind is that Boulder, along with a lot of communities in the United States, is about to have an elder boom. You know, the the post-war generation is now getting into the age where they're going to need to do something other than living in their two or three level home with a lot of lawn. And I'm just wondering what kind of outreach or input you've received from that age group or that kind of community, bearing in mind, we're still looking twenty years out. But you know, how have we been pitching it or gathering feedback from that portion of the population?
Well, I would say that in a lot of these conversations, the housing has really, the the discussion about new housing has been geared toward those that work in that East Boulder area. So, you know, I don't think that we've emphasized a flavor of housing for older adults in this area necessarily, not to say that that some of these types wouldn't, wouldn't work for that. I know that in the Transit Village, a lot of that housing has been folks that wanted to downsize from single-family homes because they're in retirement and want to move to one car. So I think that there's probably you know, some opportunity of that, especially around that the station area potential. But but it's a really good point. And I think we do. We do typically hear from older adults in our citywide engagement. But I would, I would welcome your thoughts on how to invite folks to this conversation, knowing that this is not just about senior, you know, for older adult housing, but really the the, all of the dynamics that are happening in East Boulder. So I would welcome your your thoughts on how we might do that.
Well, when we were talking about moving to virtual format, you know, some, some members of my family are really great at at figuring out Zoom and some of them, there's no hope. And so I, and I, and when you were speaking of hard to reach populations, that was a bit of a euphemism for I'm not sure who you were talking about. And I was wondering about elder populations being some of those hard to reach in a virtual format. And so I would kind of echo John's concern about going all virtual and trying to think about the different barriers in place for different kinds of people and families for whom a virtual format is quite difficult. How do we reach them? Let me think more about that. I just wanted to know more about how how hard we try to 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 reach out to that segment of the population.
We do, we do ask questions about age and demographics in our survey work. So we could, you know, kind of look up that number and see how successful we've been in the past. But the other, the other idea that I'm thinking about right now is we have a lot of medical facilities, medical services in this area. And prior to COVID, we did have some in-person stations and kind of drop in at the hospital and around those neighborhoods. Restrictions are really different now, but it's probably that area is probably if we were to do something in person, a good kind of location.
Right. So sort of man on the street intercept surveys might work. Okay, you won't have to go into the building, but could be in the vicinity, maybe.
Any more questions, Sarah?
What's not a question? I was ready to try to answer the questions that we were asking.
Shall we do the question? Yes. All right, let's do it. And let's go ahead and I forgot to share last time. We'll spin the wheel just because it's so much fun to do. And the person who will start us off this time is Sarah. I'm sorry, Hutch. But if Hutch isn't on, then Sarah. Hutch may have, may have gone to take a break. The poor guy has been.
Oh, I'm, I'm here. I I am a little confused about what I'm supposed to do, though.
Well, we're gonna give feedback now on the the public outreach plan for the fall that we just saw the presentation.
Right, right. And and I I did see that, um. My, my, I, I, I always say the same thing about public outreach is, is that, you know, are there ways to get a hold of people that don't normally give public outreach? And 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 sometimes there's some special category and sometimes they're not. I think that Boulder does a pretty darn good job with trying hard on this. And and I don't have any particular insights into mechanisms. Because of my personal background, I I resonate with some of the communities that Lupita, you might might also resonate with the, you know, Spanish native language communities. So I'm really glad to see that we're doing materials in other languages. But I I don't really have any explicit feedback, that feedback that I think is gonna be helpful. I think we just keep trying.
I guess I would just, if I could quickly follow up with certainly love to hear feedback about mechanisms and ways to reach different populations and the different demographics or communities that you want to hear from. But would also really love your feedback about what is the the type of information or what is the content of the feedback that you'd like to see us come back with? When we return towards the end of the year with some final recommendations.
And Kathleen, I will add. It it'll be super helpful to to also take your your suggestions back to our working group members. They are our our wonderful conduit. And John, you're one of them to help us get the word out and to help, you know, use their networks to help say, hey, this is going on and this, 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 this meeting is gonna be here. Come, come, come to it. Or here's this, here's this questionnaire. Please fill it out. So we do have all of our wonderful champions to help us get the word out into very specifically our Spanish-speaking community with our connectors that are on the working group, but then all of the others, too. Okay, who's next?
Did you want to go through in order, Jean, or shall we?
Oh, we can. I'm a little split-brained right now. Okay, Hutch. So then if Hutch started, then we're on Mark and then Lupita and then Sarah.
I'll simply say that I think while I miss our, I miss many city in-person meetings that we used to go to. I have been pleasantly surprised with the accessibility of online meetings. And I know that it's, it's, it's accessible to those that have the tools to get online to come to our meeting, but it has, I do feel like for to get online to come to our meeting. But it has, I, I do feel like for, for TAB, it has broadened the ability for the public to participate rather than sitting in, in council chambers for waiting for a public hearing item. And I, I think it's broadened the participation. So I would advocate, as the city goes to a hybrid model, I talked to Sarah Huntley the other day about what things look like going forward, that if, if you can do in-person meetings with online accessibility, and I know it's a challenge, but if you can, I would advocate for that. And then on your slide where you, it was entitled specifics and you had three lines there. I would simply add, ask that you add one, and that is, how does every action? And I hope this plan develops into concrete actions that can be taken. How does every action in this plan help us reach our climate goals? And, and that needs to be, when, when you go through the plan and you read the, the different, when you search for the word climate, it comes up many times, but there is, it's, it comes up and it says climate, and then the words below it don't really, don't really connect to our climate action plan at all. So I would, I would request that we put that into the specifics that the public gets to comment on.
Okay. Lupita, then Sarah.
So I had some comments earlier, and now I'm trying to go back to that space because it, it came naturally to me when you were speaking about the reach out to the Latino community. And I, I know that we had a, a very effective program going on as the pandemic hit, and that was through outreach. Outreach through the Catholic community, our specific Sacred Heart of Jesus, where we will have activities with the city. And we called the, the program Conversaciones con la Ciudad, so chats with the city. And we have city council and people like Sarah Huntley will come. And, and Ryan Henson, and it was very successful in getting good feedback, in many cases, you know, new ideas from the community, telling us directly what they needed. And that was going really well, and unfortunately, we stopped that. But in that context, that I will offer that as a, a model that has worked to make sure that those communities feel comfortable. And in fact, in the past, we, we have this discussion earlier, I thought about another question regarding that is like making sure that you are getting, you know, not only your message across to these communities, but you also get information from them. So when you actually have a true direction communication channel, I think that that's when you really reach success. When you know that you are getting good ideas that were not on your list, that came from these communities. That's what I call real success. So if there's an opportunity for that, I, I offer that as an option. Because at least with Sacred Heart of Jesus, church services are going sort of back to normal. Some of us are still listening in the parking lot, but very few of us, most of the people are back in there. But certainly, some of these activities are getting back in order. So if you're interested in that avenue, given that, you know, school is back in session, so some of these things are a possibility. I'll, I'll be happy to kind of help with that. And what else was I gonna say? Oh, yes. Regarding the modality for information, another thing that we found with the city previous initiatives with the Latino community in terms of providing information to the community, they tried a text messaging program that apparently didn't go as far as we hoped for. But in the process, found out that Facebook works fairly well. It's interesting. I just found that for a project I'm involved in Puerto Rico, where we're doing for research purposes, also using Facebook to get information for the communities. So I think that being a little open-minded about the different modalities that you can get, people engaged, that's useful and helpful. So I just wanted to mention those things. We have, have things that worked. And I hope that we can resume some of those activities.
Great. Thanks, Lupita. I'm just gonna jump back in. That, that's a great suggestion. And we'll, we would be working with LaTisia Garcia and Ana Abares Casas, who are our connectors. They help us shape that, those, those sessions. So I can bring those up with them, too. That'd be great. Perfect. Okay, Sarah, then Alex.
Okay, so the question was, what are the elements necessary to support the recommendations that you will bring back to us? So I'll start with some, some specifics, and it really is based on the earlier comments made by John and George and Lupita and my own comments. I think that we need definition and place types that are very clear and distinct from each other, so that we really do know what it is that's being proposed and how they are different. The granularity of zoning, obviously, the devil's in the details with this. And there's not much, I mean, there's, it's a huge packet, and you guys have done a ton of work, but there's not a lot of granularity. And I think what we have heard today is there's a need for granularity, given the risks to the industrial nature, the industrial zones and, and, and and not having this just become the highest, the most expensive development that is allowable. You know, it has to be less about what is allowed, but what we, is preferred, what is wanted, what is requested. Because we will get what we regulate for. And if we regulate for something vague, we're going to get the most expensive option of those vague choices. Let's see. We need clarity on missing middle housing forms. So that, and, and clarity on, on additional areas where missing middle housing is an option. We need new, new creative homeownership opportunities as well as creative thinking about where we can utilize some of our existing homeownership opportunities. We, you know, we have deed restrictions and covenants as, as a tool. And I realize that we're talking at the sort of thirty thousand-foot level in this plan, but we really need to be clear because this will drive what, what a applicant brings to planning board. We really need to be clear about where we want to make sure that there are homeownership opportunities. I would like to see real clarity on a separation of housing, residential and industrial, and some, how you might, how you would go about protecting our industrial spaces, their zones. I'd love for there to be a, if talking about outreach to specific communities, I'd like to have, I'd like to see the city have a engagement opportunity with artists and or cultural organizations to run by them, the idea of locating a space, an arts and culture space at the stamp location, as well as what the implications of the proposal might be on, on the artistic community that currently utilizes the East Boulder's area for their livelihood. With the plan as it stands. I, I don't want to just be, you know, the skunk at the party, but you know, the Be Heard Boulder is not a statistically significant survey tool. I think it gives you some insight, but I think we should not pretend that it's something that it is not. And if we're going to do statistically significant surveys, let's do statistically significant surveys. I want to, I really want to make sure that you have done outreach to the neighborhood that lives to the south of the proposed transit hub. And, you know, to just leap, tie onto what Lupita said about using Facebook. I know that Be Heard Boulder posts on Nextdoor. But maybe Nextdoor is a tool that can also be used for ongoing input specifically on maybe elements of this project, since it's such a complex project, Nextdoor is probably a tough tool, but it's, you might get some input along the same lines as what the kind of input that you would get in a Be Heard Boulder survey, but you would be able to engage more people and let them know that if they are interested in participating in an online event specifically on this project, they can reach out and find out where they are. Because I, I mean, Jean, I appreciate you saying that you feel that the staff feels that the online engagement has been really successful. I can tell you from the people that I talk to on a regular basis that this, whatever the city's doing might as well be a thousand miles away in this past year and a half. People don't feel like they access it much. They don't know what's going on. Things are kind of hard. It's not that, it's not even, they're not even, it's not about technology. It's just about it's, it's over there versus something that you, you go to, you know. So those are my comments, and we'll see what you guys bring back to us.
Sarah, those are awesome. Can I just circle back on a couple of little things with that? Very good. We do not have a budget for a statistically valid survey or so I just wanted to make that clear to make sure that no one was expecting that. And I think, you know, I, I totally agree. I think that there are a lot of folks that totally struggle with the online engagement in the platforms. But we have seen higher numbers than we would have seen in person. And I know that, like, lots of new faces and lots of new people. So it's not everyone. I, I totally recognize that. But, but there is some movement. And there are probably some folks that haven't, that, you know, so, yeah, trade-offs.
No, I hear, I hear you. And Jean, you have the hardest job, I think, in Boulder. So I, I really appreciate all you do. And, you know, the Mark McIntyre's point, a hybrid approach would, will be the, I think, a hybrid approach going forward is the right way to go, whenever word is, we're allowed to be back in, in our seats in the chambers. But I still, I do think it's still important to make it possible for people to participate online, online. But I'm just passing along that there are lots of folks who are not, there's just something less real about it. You know?
I agree. Okay, very good. Sorry, and I didn't mean to.
Don't worry.
Okay, um, Sarah, then Alex, and then George.
I think outreach is one of the city's many strengths, and I've been impressed with a lot of the outreach that's been done so far, especially with the working group. And so if that's an indication of what's to come, I think we're in a pretty good spot. I would like it if some of the engagement that's done to those who have a presence in the study area currently was sort of showcased and highlighted. And would hope that this study area is advertised to the community as a whole, as a potential, more of a destination than it is now, perhaps. So that more people are, are engaged. But a mix of, yeah, broad engagement citywide, but really highlighting and showcasing some of the feedback you hear from, from those that have a stronger presence in the study area today. And then from the transportation side of things, would, I would more confidently support the recommendations if the transportation elements were all summarized on a, a single map. I think that would help me get a pic, a picture of of what's being proposed within the public right of way.
Okay, thank you. George?
Um, thank you. And, and I concur. Jean does have the hardest job in the city. Thank you for everything you do.
My teammate, my team members work awfully.
Oh, I, not to discount everyone else, too, because I'm, I'm, I, I know putting us all together and going through all this public feedback and everything that you guys do to try to make these things a success is, is no easy feat. So I, I would echo some of what Sarah said around as it relates to the type of informations listening from the public feedback. Being as granular as possible. I think one of the challenges that I face on, sort of echoing the, the difference between in-person and sort of a Be Heard Boulder survey is the survey is sort of a one, a, a one-way dialogue that that person is having with the computer and specific questions. And what happens, even in a forum like this, that's virtual, that's not in-person, is people get a deeper understanding by, by everyone's questions. All of a sudden, there are things that are brought to light that, you know, someone might not have even thought of. And that it's, it's impossible to frame survey questions to bring to light, you know, specific things as, as people have completely different points of view. So that collective aspect of that in-person meeting with the back-and-forth dialogue with people like yourselves, I think is critical to the success of a community really understanding and buying into something. And I don't feel like an online survey does that. I, I think there's a place, but I, I understand the constraints that you have as well. As it relates to specific things, you know, like, like the use of the term "light industrial", I, I think people need to understand that I, that it could include, you know, office. And I, I don't know if, if we use that nomenclature in a survey, if people really will understand the granularity and the impact potential for something like that. And it may give us a false positive as to what people may want if they don't truly understand what that means. And it takes a meeting like this to really understand what that means. Similar to things around, you know, I, I would like to see outreach around the jobs, housing imbalance, for people to really understand that the project as proposed takes us backwards as it relates to the job housings imbalance. And I think that should be put forth black and white to the public. So they clearly understand what the potential imbalance is of, even though we're going to get thirty-five hundred units, are we going to get fifteen or seventeen thousand more jobs? And how does that impact Boulder as it relates to affordability citywide? I think these are critical issues that are not really clear in this plan. And, and I, if the public is not asked those things specifically, they won't be informed enough to give you the answers that you may need in order to get this project and, i- i- accepted and, and the outcome that we may want as a city. So those are my kind of high-level comments. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, George. Okay. Are we to Tila and then Dave?
I think that's how the alphabet goes.
Okay. And Mark, did you, were you finished? Did you get everything said that you?
Me? I'm way done. Yeah.
All right.
Don't hand him the mic again.
I think maybe John would go after me.
Um, so I, I think we have Tila, Dave, and then John.
Yeah. I do not have a whole lot to add on top of what has been mentioned. I suppose the one thing that I am wondering is how, how realistic are some of the assumptions about what people want and what the, what the demand is out there for for kinds of spaces? It is concerning right now that, you know, high-tech office use is the highest dollar paying per square foot out there. Is that going to be true in twenty years? I really don't know. I think, like Mark mentioned earlier, we've learned a lot about this work-at-home revolution from COVID. And it's, it's a little early to say what, what the world is going to look like in twenty years. And we're, we're always going to get it wrong. But one thing that we do know is that, you know, we've had these evil in commuters for the longest time and proposing developments and, and, and planning for mixed use and, you know, smaller housing and a bigger range of housing closer to employment centers is, in theory, a great idea. Is that, is there really a demand for that here? Perhaps because I'm not in the planning space, I don't know a whole lot of background information on that. But to the extent that we've been able to reach out to people who live here now, who work nearby now, or who, who live nearby now. And I know that there's been an attempt to talk to local employers in that, in the East Boulder area. I don't know how successful we've been at reaching the actual evil in commuters to say, if we build this, would you I don't know how successful we've been at reaching the actual evil in commuters to say, if we build this, would you come? And so I I would just sort of feel better if I had a better understanding that these proposals, these changes in land use, these kinds of development patterns are actually meeting an unmet need that we can demonstrate is an unmet need right now. Or, you know, that there's a desire out there to fill these spaces in the way that we expect them to be. I think that there are very good reasons to think that you're right. But if there's a way to to put some meat on those bones, I would I would feel more confident in in supporting this plan. That being said, that's completely separate from my support for the for stamp for the stamp area. I think if we're we're planning a transit, you know, hub there, we're planning to have bus rapid transit on Arapahoe. We've really got to build out that that kind of of development that I think you have really good bones on that on that part. But just in general, the larger sub community plan, I'd like to feel more confident if I could understand a little more about what people are wanting and what we what the rationale for for thinking that we're right in twenty years, that that's what they're going to want.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll just add that a lot of great things were said about equity outreach. So I won't say much more, except that I will point out that there are good meeting spots in aged community facilities. And sometimes those are good places to have in person meetings. And also Vista Village is adjacent to the site. That might be another mobile home community to reach out to. And I'll also say that Ana Casas must be about eighteen different people because she's done so much with the city in the last year. And so I want I want to really commend the the working group for getting people like Anna on. And I want to also point out that the working group is how we do sub community planning, and that is public outreach. And I I want to make sure that people don't discount all the public outreach that's happened already. This is these are people who really dug deep into this problem. So that said, I will say it's going to be a challenge to get with my larger group of the public to understand everything. So I want to commend the idea of using three D visuals. I think that's a really good idea. And and that can really stimulate some great conversations. So I think it's wonderful to go to go out with the the three D, the three D representations. I just want to take one issue with the point, Georgie, on the jobs, housing imbalance. If we were to build out to the max development potential for the sites as currently zoned, we would horribly upset the jobs, housing imbalance. That's a scenario with the current zoning. So we can paint scenarios under which business conditions cause various things to happen. But I don't know if there was an actual acknowledgement by staff or the presenters that this would exacerbate the jobs, housing imbalance. It really depends on a lot of the things that still have yet to be set, like the zoning and the stop gaps that might prevent various outcomes. So I think it's a good point to say that we don't want to upset it, but I don't think anybody's admitted that that this land use in it by in and of itself is going to lead us in that direction. So unless somebody wants to correct me, I just want to make that clarification.
Great, thanks, Dave. All right, John. Your mute your need to unmute.
Yeah.
Here we go.
But sorry, thank you. So I I guess I'll organize my comments in in two categories. One is the substance of of the plan and the other and the other is the public contact procedures that we're being asked about specifically. The the first I I would just like to say that I I think George and and Sarah presented it extremely well, some of the issues of concern, and I I agree with that. And in response to to David's comment, I think when we it it's very important for us to talk about the the ultimate consequences of what a community plan could lead to. I understand that the present zoning may may result in in a certain situation, which should also be discussed because that's an alternative. But when we are doing planning, I think it's very important for us to consider what the consequences of following that plan might be or implementing that plan. And so.
So can I just correct that? I didn't say that it was a might be the statement that was made was it does exacerbate the jobs, housing imbalance. And so I was you you do so, you know, if you want to say that I'm wrong, go ahead. But that's but I wasn't discouraging what could have I was talking about what could happen. I was discouraging us from saying that something will happen that we may or may not know. Well, I just because we're talking about my comment, let me let me clarify. I I heard specifically from staff, David, that we would get up to thirty five hundred units and that it would not be a one to one ratio. In fact, it would be potentially double what's there today in its in in the planning exercise. So I was talking about the plan that we were talking about, not necessarily talking about the conditions that exist today. But that's a that's a result, that's a potential result of redevelopment. And this plan is it will exacerbate the jobs, housing imbalance as presented. Do you someone can correct me if that's wrong. You agree with that, Kathleen?
Yeah, let me pull up because I I do have the I do have the numbers and I I think that there is some confusion around uh, numbers right now. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Let me see if I can pull that stuff up.
To give Kathleen a little bit of time, you relax so you can find it. Because sometimes when you're on the spot, it becomes even harder to find the most obvious. So don't feel bad. He makes those statements as well. I think there's a number of us who felt comfortable being concerned about it, David. And that is because I think that when we're trying to do the math and we're asking for the evidence that the math can possibly in a different direction. Then if we don't get it, we go by the most likely direction of things. And so if I were to put my bet, and I'm not a betting person unless I know I'm winning, I will bet there will be an increase in that gap. And so, yes, based on what we heard today, I have no qualms whatsoever saying that this will make things worse. So I'm using their statistics training that I already have to at least reach something where I can feel comfortable saying. Now, there's the lack of enough information. That's what the other question is about, trying to find out how did they come out with the project, what criteria were they holding most important? So that the exercises that they came up with is actually what they think is important to go forward. I think Sarah did an excellent job asking and even quoting the report where she found specific evidence that even our own staff is, you know, thinking this is not going to work in this direction. So putting all these things together, I think some of us are comfortable making some statements where it just shows our concern. And that, at the very least, I think has to be respected because that's the reason why we're in the planning board. We have the best.
Excuse me, but I am fully respecting everybody's opinion here. I simply want to find out if we're talking about conjecture of what could happen to max build out or something that's based on actual models that would predict an outcome. Right? We know that if in today's world, if we were to build out to the maximum development potential for all of those zones, we would have, we would furiously increase the jobs, housing imbalance. So does this area plan make sub community plan make that picture worse or better? Right? Because right now you can't build as much housing. Okay.
So I did I did find the material that I was looking for. So let me pull this up on the screen so that we're all looking at the same thing. So when we went through that scenario testing phase in the fall, we looked at changing different land uses. And this is where our model came into play. And so the model builds projections for the number of new homes that could be supported, the types of homes and the number of jobs that might be created under these different scenarios. And this assumes under our current land use code, which dictates size of of these different spaces, building heights, all of those things were built into the model. So when we did that exercise, we found if we did nothing, if we made no changes to the land use, we could only anticipate or expect around three hundred new homes added, so six hundred homes in the area total. And then the number of jobs could potentially double. So that's that double number that I brought up earlier. And I I think I misspoke when the topic came up because what we have done with, you know, the numbers that I provided in our our presentation about the new housing that could be generated. We went through some calculations to create those numbers, but we don't have enough information to be able to project jobs because of that. Because we have broken a lot of the rules around our zoning code. So there's just not a a button that I can click that would demonstrate the number of jobs. So we have we have a housing unit count for the proposal. We do not have a jobs count for the proposal. But, you know, i i if we look at the other scenarios that were created in the fall, when we do make some of those mixed use, land use changes, we see an increase of homes created, not a ton of change in the number of jobs created. You know, little reductions for each of these, but really not a a significant amount. And and part of that is, you know, I think something that was noted in the market study which described how underutilized a lot of these parcels are today. So I hope that I hope that clears up some confusion that I think I created earlier.
So I just wanted to, I didn't want to necessarily say that this wasn't a concern because certainly economic conditions can push us to a jobs, housing imbalance. But I want to make sure that we understand we cannot draw some sort of hard conclusion that the sub community plan has done that yet without some additional data. So is that clear now, John? And I can go back to you now, and I'm sorry you interrupted. John, you're muted, but I'll just I'll say one more comment since it was the comment that we were talking about. I made, which is I I do believe that this kind of planning pushes the direction. I mean, the whole purpose of this planning is to develop this area. And so I I supporting what the pizza said, I I don't I I don't I don't necessarily think it's conjecture. I think we are going to accelerate the build out, which is which is fine if that's what we're choosing to do. But we need to acknowledge that what this plan does is accelerates a lot of stuff that could happen here, good and bad. And and what by accelerating development here, you are, whether or not you're building three thousand five hundred units, you 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 will, it will result, it will likely result in increasing the jobs, housing imbalance, because it's also going to accelerate development of all this additional industrial and office space. And so that, you know, someone else brought up the idea of, you know, walkable neighborhood is great, but it will raise rents and it will bring in development, which is which people just need to understand. So I I I don't I don't think it's necessarily a misstatement to characterize this as this this has an extreme potential to increase the job housing imbalance versus what is there today? Because we are we are putting in place a plan that incentivizes development. So if I wasn't clear on that, that's that's what I meant around that. Thank you.
If I might add one last thing just to so that we're clear. I think that the intention here is really that we are trying to solve very difficult problems. And so some of these things are easy and understandable things that will help and some of the ones are much more complicated. And I I just want to make a comment also because one of the things that we're dealing with is this whole issue of the people that coming in. And I wouldn't call it evil. I am, and this is a little facetious because I know that Tila didn't mean in a bad way. But I'm saying if people think of what the way I look at these people coming in is, I think, is is us not do it not doing a good job as a city to serve these people that come to work here. So as long as we have this imbalance that these people cannot afford to live here, we are failing. I wouldn't call them evil. If anybody's evil here is us doing a poor job. That's the way I look at it. So I put it on us, not asking the hard questions or, you know, just being a little hard on ourselves to us harder and 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 just taking a harder stance on how we're going to help the city solve this difficult problem. Thank you.
Okay, John, let's get back to yours.
I I had a whole series of brilliant remarks and they're all all outclassed by this discussion. So anyway, so anyway, I just wanted to categorize my remarks in two ways. One is with respect to substance, and that is I think that there needs to be some, there's a a couple of significant elements that need to be clarified. And one is the discussion of the entitlements that may be given to developers in order to entice them to do what we want. I I personally think that it's a something we need to think carefully about, both in principle and in practice. Because if these developers are making so much money the way things are now that they can't even be enticed to do something different without giving them an additional entitlement, I think that's something that we should be talking about explicitly at some point, then the sooner the better. The the other point I just wanted to make to Kathleen was that you propose to have three in person sessions in the in the process, in the public process that you described. One with the San La Sorrow people and one or two with the landowners in the area. Well, it seems to me that that may be a an inappropriate proportion because, first of all, the landowners and and office owners and developers are those who have been already most involved in the public in the in the working group. And they are already, I would think, very aware of what's been going on. And in fact, I think that they have had a tremendous influence in the planning activities so far. So which is not bad. It's appropriate for them to do that. But I don't think it's appropriate to focus the public meetings for their benefit. I think they should be focused more for the to the city at large because that's the group that has been least active so far in the in the in the public efforts and and they need to be more involved. So that's just my thoughts on that.
Thanks, John. I think we're through everyone. And just to that point, I think we really wanted to make sure that we were focusing on making sure that folks that hadn't been involved were aware of the project and the recommendations of especially those landowners. Did we miss anybody? And is there anything left, anything else that folks would like to add on this question? Are we are we all worn out? I know I'm worn out.
We actually went a little bit longer than we were supposed to, but I guess keeping comments to one to two minutes is kind of hard. Sarah?
I just have a process question. So eventually this will come back to planning board and then the council. When it comes back to planning board, is there some presumption that because it's gone through the process it's gone through that all we have is a thumbs up or a thumbs down opportunity? Or is there more opportunity for feedback? I'm just a little confused as to what how this goes.
Yeah, so we will bring we will bring the community feedback that we hear and the revised sub community plan back to planning board. For sub community plans, I see Hella is on, so please correct me if I'm wrong. But for sub community plans, those are adopted by planning board. And then they require adoption by planning board and then would go to city council for adoption as well.
Hella? So so yeah, but I just want to make sure so. yeah, but I just want to make sure, so uh, requiring adoption can mean a deep engagement the way we do on any project. You know, we, we're looking for, you know, what, we're, we're trying to get feedback, or it can just be either we vote for it, or some of us vote for it, and some of us don't. I, I'm just, I, is there a, is there another hearing experience to come up, or where we'll actually, again, sort of go through some of these issues? Because what I heard from, from our, the planning board colleagues was I would be uncomfortable with this until these other things are explored and considered and hopefully addressed. So that's what I'm trying to understand is if the next here, the next hearing is, we will be able to look closely at how these issues were considered and addressed or not.
Yeah, I think um, I will need to check in with Charles and Jacob about the schedule on that. Right now, we were just planning for um, to come back with those refinements and a complete plan for adoption. But if um, it's needed to have uh, uh, another, uh, another kind of working session or study session prior to that to go through some of the details, um, we can look at the schedule and, and try to figure that out.
Okay, I think, thank you. It's helpful to understand sort of next steps. I appreciate that.
Great. Any other questions, John?
Yeah, I, I, I would strongly encourage another working session uh, of the type that you described, because this is a, a big enough and complicated enough uh, issue that that we need to be able to go through it in detail and satisfy ourselves about it.
Great. Uh, anything else we wanted to cover tonight? Uh, we have a debrief on the agenda. Any comments on the meeting? It went long. Kiva?
I was thinking about an hour ago. I, I'm really glad that we're having these joint meetings. Like, I, I think it has been really interesting how much input we've had from TAB and from planning board of very different aspects, um, which I think demonstrates something that TAB's been complaining about for a little while, is that we're not necessarily very good at, at cross-thinking from, from cross-perspectives. And so I, I think this has been a very illustrative. I'm hoping planning boards learn some from us. I've definitely learned a lot from you guys. But I think it's really been quite useful to have us all on the same call.
Yeah, I, I'll echo that, and uh, thank you all for uh, I, I know it, it probably takes a little extra time, but we do learn a lot more. And uh, and I also want to thank staff, uh, Kathleen and, and uh, the entire team, Gene and uh, and everyone for, for all this great work. Um, I know how hard this is to, you know, get something this big and get the communities uh, comfortable with it. So thanks for all the hard work you're doing on this and uh, look forward to the next, next iteration. Alright. So with that, are we ready to uh, head out? Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Thanks to our consultants, Jay and Mark for hanging in.
Yep, thanks. Thank you, everybody. Sorry, I didn't say all the names, but good care.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Alright.